Six o'clock. Come on, man. We trying to get it out of you.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 27th meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. At this time tonight, the prayer will be given by Alderman Kinsey.
Good afternoon, everyone. We would like to welcome you to the New Bern Board of Aldermen meeting tonight. Ms. Simpson, would you come up to the podium and open up prayer for us, please?
Praise the Lord, everybody.
Praise the Lord.
Amen. Heavenly Father, please make me worthy to call upon your holy and righteous name. Father precious name of Jesus, as I bow down before you with low and humble as I know how, Heavenly Father, and Father, I thank you for all of your blessings, Heavenly Father, during these perilous days. And Father, we come before you right now begging for forgiveness, Heavenly Father, if we have done anything to wound our sisters and brothers, Heavenly Father, please forgive us right now. And Father, it's a special blessing for the city, county, and the nation, Heavenly Father, who God touches in a special way. Father, I ask a special prayer for this meeting tonight, Heavenly Father. And Father, if they do anything, Heavenly Father, if they find any reason to disagree, Heavenly Father, help them to get on one accord. And Father, we thank you, Heavenly Father, as a special blessing for all of us that are here tonight, Heavenly Father. God, when we can't calling your name anymore, Heavenly Father, yes, for rest and prayers in your kingdom. And the Father, Son, the blessed Holy Ghost. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country? Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Matt Flutt, would you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here.
Alderwoman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Dest.
Here.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, before we get going, does the, anybody want to make adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we invite up the gentleman who's here from Team Rubicon and have him speak to us. They are headed out and just hear a little bit of update of what they've done for the city and the great work that they've done. So I'd like to call the gentleman up to the mic, have him introduce himself. Scott, if you'll just come to the mic, please.
Anything else you'd like to change? A minute?
No.
Okay, in form of motion, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Please jump forward, sir.
Good evening. My name's Scott Walters. I'm the city coordinator for New Bern for Team Rubicon. So, we're done. Eleven weeks. The big numbers, so in the greater area which includes Craven County, Jones County, and anybody else that we can get to, we did damage estimates on 446 homes. We worked on 299 homes. It's a combination of completed and in progress. There's some homes, for example, where we could cut trees, but we couldn't take them off the roof, or they had requested demolition and we didn't have the equipment. So we're, I'm going to finish them. We estimate it was 341,000 cubic feet of degree removal. We had 405 members, 26,000 hours working in the field. And based on the FEMA estimates, it's about savings to the community of about $762,000. The city is about it. I think it was really proud to be part of your group. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, I really wanted to thank you all. I mean, you came in here with great pride and spirit and nothing like a group of veterans coming in to help others when they have helped our country along the way. So I really appreciate everything that you've all done. From first I met Aaron and all of you all, what a wonderful, wonderful group of men and women. I appreciate, you know, you being here. I want to thank the fire department for allowing you to bunk there.
They were fabulous.
We want to especially thank Reverend P.O. Rogers for the use of his property where you all set up. And it was, you know, you'd go by there every day and see this massive trucks and all the good things that you were doing there. So it's going to kind of look lost without being there. But we certainly want to thank Pastor Rogers for his efforts in helping us and all those along the way. But, but thank you for being here tonight for the update and hope that we can maybe get you all to come back in the future for good reasons and, and not necessarily to help because of a disaster.
Yes, ma'am. We had, we had people from all fifty states, District Columbia, Puerto Rico, and southern countries that participated in the, in the efforts. And so people loved your group.
Mr. Scott, I just want to echo what Alderman Bingle said. We, we really appreciate you guys coming out here and doing an amazing job and just getting right in there day one and, and taking care of our, our citizens. So we really appreciate it and I appreciate your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Job well done, Scott. It was, it was great. You, you guys just, you know, you know how to get in there and take care of business and I appreciate it. And I've said to Aaron many times and I say to you, thank you for choosing New Bern. There's many places that you could have picked and you picked New Bern. And thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other Alderman?
Scott, it's, it's Giving Tuesday. The mayor and I had an opportunity to spend some time with some nonprofits around the city this morning. Is there a website or some contact information for Team Rubicon if someone feels led to make a donation to your work and effort that you could share with us?
Yes, sir. We are at teamrubiconusa.org. And so we would appreciate that. And we're very fortunate to have very big sponsors. But, you know, the, the donations that meant the most were the, the meals people provided for us, the cookies, the, I mean, we say we work for hugs and handshakes. And so that really was the, the benefit. And I am the city coordinator. And one of the, my, one of my responsibilities is to work with the state vo ad and local vaad groups to, to identify us, what we call service projects. And so, you know, that could include things, for example, fixing the walls, the Veterans Memorial, or cutting up trees at Camp Seafair, things like that. So it's part of our responsibility locally as, as grassroots to help the community. So one of the things we'll do is, is I'll provide my contact information. And as people have ideas, I think that we might be able to help with, we would work with the other, the other groups like ourselves and, and do that. And something, we try to do something every month when we can, and larger ones in summer.
Great. Thank you.
Scott, to you and your team, I just want to say thank you. I got an opportunity when I was out in the field visiting certain areas of Ward Five to meet some of your team members. And they were talking with some of the residents. And it was just like, just by talking with the residents and getting some of the residents' information, it gave them some hope. You know, I could see that at the time when they were talking with residents. So I just appreciate you and your team and God bless all of you and safe travels back.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I don't have to go far. I live on Spencer Ave. So for me, it's close.
Praise the Lord.
Matter of fact, when they came here, they stayed at my house because we hadn't quite got used to the fire department yet.
Oh, that's awesome.
And Scott, I'd like to, to say, saying, it's, it's not enough said for the work that you actually come to the city to do because we was hit very, very hard. And still, people are still suffering right today. And we just want to continue to keep you in prayer and we'd like for you to keep the city in prayer as well. And thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Is there discussion? CNN, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. This time, let's go to item number seven, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, at this time, item number seven is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance amending Article Two definitions, Article Ten permissible uses, and Article Eighteen parking of Appendix A of the City of New Bern land use ordinance. As you recall, at our last meeting, the board called for this public hearing under the consent agenda to consider these proposed amendments to Section fifteen dash fifteen, fifteen dash one forty-six, and fifteen dash three forty-two of the land use ordinance. A notice of the public hearing has been duly advertised in the paper as required. By statute, the proposed amendments will create standards for marinas in the city of New Bern. And I will say that at the September fourth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, planning and zoning board voted five to one to recommend approval of the proposed amendments. This time, I want to turn it over to Bradley. He is going to do a quick presentation on what these amendments are. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those. Do you?
Mayor Outlaw, Board of Aldermen, my name's Brad Stevior. I'm with the Development Services Department. The reason I'm here before you today is to talk about marinas. Currently, the city has no land use regulations with regards to marinas, which means that not only do developers not know what they can do with their property with regards to marinas and waterfront development, but also citizens do not know the type of protections that they can be afforded against bad development practices with regards to marinas. So the proposed language here introduces a few different concepts to you. The, one of them being docks. And docks are what we would treat as a residential, an accessory use. It's like if you have just a, a private residence and you have a, a dock on the back because you have waterfront residence, that's an accessory use. And it's, up to four boats are allowed there. We also have that corresponding use for commercial docks. So something like Persimmons where they have a couple of docks along the side that you can pull up to for that, that type of thing. And then we come to marinas. And we have two different types of marinas we're proposing to put into the table permissible uses in our definitions. One of them's a commercial marina, and that has a lot of services like refueling, repair services, this sort of thing. And the other is a residential marina. And that's the sort of marina that's typically associated with a residential development. Some of the people who use it will be residents, some not. But the real difference is the intensity of the use. And these uses, unlike docks, will be regulated in the table of permissible uses and will require special use permits within all residential districts. Whether it's a commercial or residential marina, it will be required to gain a special use permit, which is a public hearing process that goes before the Board of Adjustment. So in the case that a marina project is in a particular neighborhood and there are specific concerns specific to that neighborhood, they can be addressed in that process. And in our commercial districts, we're a little more permissive. In our most commercial districts, we allow marinas as by rep. If you have any questions?
At this time, is the board having questions?
No.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Stevens, do you have any comments before opening a public hearing?
Not this time, sir.
At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. Anybody in the audience that would like to come forward, ask questions, make any comments concerning this item, you're free to come up at this time.
Motion to close the public hearing?
A second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance amending Article Two definitions, Article X permissible uses, and Article Eighteen, it looks like, parking of Appendix A of the City of New Bern land use ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Harris. Is there discussion? CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Dest.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is another public hearing and consideration of the board to adopt an ordinance amending Article Two, Section fifteen dash fifteen, basic definitions and interpretations of the City of New Bern Land Use Code. This public hearing was also called for at your September, I'm sorry, yes, your last meeting that we had, which would have been September, I'm sorry, November thirteenth. And at that time, the notice of the public hearing was duly advertised as required by statute. The proposed amendments will clean up the residential definitions found in the basic definitions interpretation section. The last overhaul that we did of the land use code created some errors in formatting and led to retention of some of the older, now redundant definitions for residential uses. And we want to rectify that issue. Adopting these proposed changes will make sure that there's no confusion in how different residential uses are defined. At the June fifth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously to recommend the approval of the proposed amendments. There's a memo that's included from Mr. Stevior. That's included in your packet. Do you have anything you want to add to it?
Okay. Any, any other comments from staff? At this time, we're going to open a public hearing. If anybody in the public would like to come forward, ask questions, make comments concerning this item, you're free to come up at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the pub, um, adopt the ordinance amending Article Two, Section fifteen dash fifteen, basic definitions, interpretations of the City of New Bern land use ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Harris, seconded by Alderman Odom. Is there further discussion? CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Dest.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, item number nine is our presentation for Hazard Mitigation Assistant and, and Hazard Mitigation Grant Programs. As we mentioned to you at our last meeting, there are some, some quickly approaching critical dates with respect to hazard mitigation. And we have called on some of our individuals at the state level to come in to provide some information to the board and the public as well as potentially answer some questions that, that may come up from the board or maybe from the public as well, if the board so chooses for that to happen. Hazard mitigation grant program provides funding for long-term hazard mitigation measures following major disaster events and declarations within communities. The City of New Bern is collecting this information currently from the residents who may be interested in buyouts or elevations because of the damage that they sustained during hurricane flooding. So at this point, I'm going to ask Amanda to come up. Amanda is going to talk briefly about this and then she's will inter, inter, introduce our guests that are here with us tonight from the state. And then I think at that point, Mr. Ruggieri's going to come up and kind of go over quickly what we have already established and set up for our citizens to be able to submit their information so that we can submit it on their behalf to the state for consideration of the, the program. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I'm here to introduce Ryan Cox, who is the State Hazard Mitigation Officer. And he will be making a presentation to you tonight. In support, Jerry Frye is also here, who is the Flood Plane Management and Insurance Group Supervisor. Ashley Betchold is the State Historic Preservation Lead. And Mark Seth is the State Environmental Advisor for FEMA. So right now, though, I'll have Mr. Cox come up.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm excited to talk to you about hazard mitigation. My presentation is being pulled up right now, so I'm kind of stalling.
Well, why are you stalling? Tell us who you report to statewide. Who is your boss?
I work for North Carolina Emergency Management.
Okay, so Strawberry will be Director Strawberry?
Sprayberry.
Spray, ah, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Director Mike Sprayberry is our director for North Carolina Emergency Management.
Okay, good. We had a nice meeting with him in Raleigh. Well, Asheville, excuse me. We had some meetings. So, yeah.
Mayor's, was that the mayor's? That was the mayor's.
Metro Mayor.
He called me on the way back from that. I don't remember why either. All right. So this is the presentation that I've been giving for sub-applicants, which eligible sub-applicants for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program are counties and municipal governments. We have several different types of mitigation that fall under the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program. The fir, the first two are non-disaster programs that come out annually. These are appropriated by Congress, both of them are. One is the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Program. You might hear me refer to it as PDM, Old Habits Die Hard. I, we do talk a lot of acronyms within North Carolina Emergency Management and FEMA. The other one is mitigation, flood mitigation assistance. This is directly for those that have flood insurance. So you must have flood insurance on a home to be eligible for flood mitigation assistance. They are annually appropriated by Congress. Priorities do change from year to year for both programs. They are a seventy-five to twenty percent federal share, twenty-five percent state and local share. The state does not pick up the match on either one of these programs, unlike the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. With flood mitigation assistance, there's a sliding scale grant or cost share. Severe repetitive loss properties are a hundred percent. These are properties that have, have had multiple claims that total a certain number, a certain dollar amount over a course of ten years, a rolling ten years. So it is a hundred percent federal share. The repetitive loss program or repetitive loss properties are ninety-ten. And they have the same definition or a similar definition. They're just, they don't meet the same total as a severe repetitive loss. I'm not sure what that definition is. If y'all want the definition, I have somebody here that can give it.
Ryan, can I, can I just stop you for a second? Because I'm going to tell you that, of course, this is overwhelming to not only me, but to so many people. And I want to make sure that I understand it.
Yes, ma'am.
So I may ask you to talk to me like I was a five-year-old so that I can really, you know, get this in here. But when you talk about a hundred percent federal on the SRL properties, you're saying that it's covered a hundred percent in reimbursement.
Yes, ma'am. So, so cost shares are matches. So the federal share is seventy-five. It can be anything from seventy-five percent to a hundred percent. That's how much the federal government will pay on that project. The local share or the state share, ten percent and twenty-five percent is what has to, what must come from the local government or state government to match the program, to make the, to make the project whole at a hundred percent.
So this doesn't have anything to do with private individuals? Is this?
The funds can come from private individuals. They can come from the local governments. It can come through in-kind services. So the staff time that, that's paid to manage the projects.
Are you, you're meaning for the, for the?
Non-disaster.
This is non-disaster.
Private individuals, do you mean buying, is this buying out the property?
It could be buying out. It could be elevating.
Okay, so you're saying that the local on the all others that are not total losses or the other definition, that the city would have to, if, if the government is going to give us seventy-five percent, meaning we meet the criteria and they're going to buy out, elevate, that the, the local government is required to pay the other twenty-five percent to the project to make it a whole of one hundred percent of?
Correct. In some way, shape, form, or fashion. Not necessarily cash.
Okay, because in-kind services.
Correct. So let's, let's do a, I'm going to give you an example real quick and hopefully that'll kind of help out. And you correct me if I'm wrong. Flood mitigation assistance is, let's, let's remove ourselves from Hurricane Florence. Let's say we're three years down the road. And obviously, this is annually appropriated by Congress, depends on the priorities should change from year to year. But obviously, this is a, this, this is a situation to where if we were to do a resiliency study or a mitigation study for the city of New Bern, and we are at year five, and five years down the road from today, and we have an implementable strategy that was identified in our resiliency plan that may go towards flood mitigation assistance, we could potentially look through an application process with the federal government at that time to potentially have some of these severe repetitive loss or your repetitive loss properties, depending on which ones we want to identify, to potentially remove them out of these flood planes, either through elevating them, demoing them, or moving them.
Makes sense.
And then what, what that is, so if this project was identified was a million dollars, then we could potentially get nine hundred thousand dollars from the, the state on repetitive loss. And we would have to come up with either through our own funds or through local funds or through in-kind labor or potentially grant funds, the additional ten percent that would be required. That kind of gives you, is that a, a pretty good example of?
That's partial property and that you, that's not saying that this is what we're going to do for city-owned property. It's individual.
This would primarily be for buyout or, or elevation or moving properties out of floodplain areas.
Got you. I'm on board. Calm it down.
I'm going to confuse you just a little bit more. I'm sorry.
Let me ask you a question first, please. But didn't you say this only applied to residents that have flood insurance?
FMA does. But that's why I say I'm getting ready to confuse you a little bit more.
Okay.
I apologize.
Well, it's okay.
So in the last three years, flood mitigation assistance has gone to where it was strictly the buyout and elevation program to where they're doing a little more community resilient. They're looking at the community resilient type projects. So this is projects, infrastructure type projects that could reduce flooding to an entire neighborhood, maybe. Some of the types of projects would be upsizing culverts. It's, it's not for deferred maintenance. So your, your culvert's broken and we're putting the same thing back. It would be upsizing those culverts to increase flow, increase volume through those culverts. All right? So we're looking, they're, FEMA has, has gotten out, outside of, they're looking outside of the box for some projects.
Prevention.
So these projects would be a seventy-five, twenty-five split. They would not be the ninety-ten or the one hundred percent federal share.
Okay, so for me to understand, for this, so hypothetically, we had a community where they're over by the water and they were completely flooded, flooded. So if we were to create a, a plan where, say hypothetically, we wanted to put up a seawall where if it was to flood, it would be past a certain elevation, we'd apply. And if you guys agreed with it because it was going to possibly prevent further flooding in this area, would this program work?
Hypothetically, yes.
Okay.
I'm not, I, I say hypothetically because your seawall, I don't know how eligible that would be. We would have to definitely run that route. But yes, hypothetically, yes. You're on the right track.
Okay.
So four oh four mitigation is the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program. This is what comes following a presidential disaster declaration. It is a, the cost share on this is seventy-five percent federal share, twenty-five percent non-federal share, which means the state is picking that up for, for Hurricane Florence. Historically, the state has picked it up since Hurricane Floyd. So this is no cost to local governments other than what you have to do to manage the project. Little more information here than probably you, you all need, but we are North Carolina's enhanced plan state. So we get an additional twenty percent for hazard mitigation assistance because we manage grants very well. We hit the POP marks, period of performance marks for each grant application. That equated to roughly twenty-five million dollars for Hurricane Matthew in additional funding. Types of projects that can be funded, there's the five percent initiative projects. These projects are typically stream gauged, stream gauges and generators. They don't require a benefit cost analysis. There's the seven percent planning funds. So that's five percent of the twenty percent and then seven percent of the twenty percent can be used on, so seven percent can be used on hazard mitigation planning. That will not be necessary for Hurricane Florence because hazard mitigation plans were funded under Hurricane Matthew for the entire state, all jurisdictions within the state. The rest of the funds, the remaining funds will be used for acquisitions, elevations, mitigation reconstruction, potential safe rooms, all pending a positive benefit cost analysis. FEMA has a benefit cost analysis tool that all projects must run through and prove to be cost effective. So we, we run that at the state once the projects are submitted. Questions?
I'm sorry, I got one question. So where it says the seven percent on hazardous mitigation planning, is that something that the local government would have? Is that like a grant or like can nonprofits that are, like we have a nonprofit organization right now that's dealing with basically the recovery and planning for if we have another bad hurricane again? Is that something that they can apply for and use these funds to kind of help with that situation?
No, ma'am. This is generally hazard mitigation plans.
Okay.
Hazard mitigation plans are required by all local governments to be eligible for hazard mitigation assistance as well as public assistance category C through G.
Okay, got you. So with, with the hazard mitigation plan, I know you said North Carolina is an enhanced state. So does that break down to the, is there anything required by the different counties to, in order to fall up under that twenty percent?
No, ma'am. So the state has a separate plan than each county and city. North Carolina has thirty-four regional hazard mitigation plans. Craven County participated in the Pamlico Sound Hazard Mitigation Plan, which includes several counties and all municipal, all municipalities. That plan will become That plan will be coming up for, coming up for update in the very near future. The way we determine how much we get in hazard mitigation grant program funding following a disaster is individual assistance payouts plus public assistance payouts. And the individual assistance payouts does not include small business, the Small Business Administration loans. So it's just individual assistance payouts plus public assistance payouts equals the total disaster. Total disaster times 20% gives us the total dollar figure that we will receive, North Carolina as a whole will receive for hazard mitigation from Hurricane Florence.
So we're only receiving 20% of 30, I'll just say $35 billion?
Yes, ma'am.
And then it has, that 20% has to be broken down by each county that qualifies?
Yes, ma'am.
Which means there's little to nothing.
And the 404 mitigation monies, they're available statewide as well, correct?
It is available statewide, but state, North Commerce Management comes up with priorities, and our priorities always go straight to the declared counties.
Is there a designated percentage that is required or that goes to the affected counties or cities?
No, sir. It, the, traditionally in the past, it's always gone to the local governments first that were heavily impacted. And then if there's anything, if there's still funds left over, once those needs are met, it's opened up to the rest of the state.
Do you, do you see areas of conflict in the future? We can't go a lot by the past, but go back and, and try to retrofit certain infrastructure. But do you see, this might be a little philosophical, but it'll help the public and maybe the governing board, a conflict between mitigating, mitigating, I mean, part of that is averting the next flood. Do you see a conflict with what your office is trying to do, and on the other hand, water quality, that's requiring certain frictions and impediments to proper hydrology, getting water into, into the river and out? Do you see any conflict there? Is there any state talk between the two agencies? There weren't too many years ago, DOT was sued by water quality for soil erosion problems up in Triad area. So that is part of the discussion here, because part of the elevation or not elevation is if you have three or four neighborhoods in New Bern, and if you have whatever amount of money, the areas that have more optimal means of discharge of floodwaters are probably gonna get elevated. Areas that are, are continually in a hazard from the ability to traverse the road systems, because you can elevate a home 90 feet, and if the road is still getting 10 feet of water in it, that doesn't make a lot of sense. The buyout does, versus areas that do not have that kind of problem.
We, it's funny you ask that. We have a meeting scheduled with Department of Environmental Quality within the next couple of weeks to work out, work out some of these.
My two cents worth on that, because, you know, this whole thing is about 25-year flood event, water events. And we've had a 500 and an 800 and a couple of more. And, you know, at some point, if, if the, if the eastern part of the state is gonna get a grip on what we're dealing with here, somebody's gonna have to give us some relief in the form of draconian, out-of-date methodologies of discharge of, of water quality. Are you smiling, sir?
I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going-
Well, I'm not either.
I'm not going to-
You don't have to be an engineer to know something's not flowing right. No pun intended.
We are, for the first time since Hurricane Floyd, we are implementing 407 mitigation. 407 mitigation is going to allow us to expedite funding for hazard mitigation assistance. This will be only for buyout purposes. These are homes that are within a special flood hazard area and deemed substantially damaged. What this does is it allows hazard mitigation grant program to purchase the properties and the fees that go along with that, title work, surveys, appraisals, et cetera, that HMGP pays for, hazard mitigation grant program pays for. And then public assistance comes along and pays for the inspections, environmental inspections, the abatement if required, demolition, debris removal, and reseeding. What this does, if you go back to this slide, it increases our public assistance numbers and saves us on our hazard mitigation dollars. The kicker with 407 mitigation is that we have to have properties identified within 60 days of the recovery scoping meeting. So you'll see some deadlines, and you're probably, your eyes are gonna pop out of your head. I apologize for those deadlines, but because of this, we have to move this process along really fast. 60 days within a recovery scoping meeting, most of them were held in the early part of November, so I have till the early part of January to get these properties identified and on the project worksheets with public assistance. Work must also be completed within two years of declaration of disaster, which would be, declaration was 9/14/2018, so two years would be 9/13/2020.
When you, when you say work must be completed, that means the project must be done and over with.
Yes, sir.
What, what's the payment schedule like of the funding?
So this is a reimbursement program from North Emergency Management. Once the award happens, you can submit a cost report, the county can submit, or the town, sorry, the city can submit a cost report at any point in time, as long as it's $500 or more. That's our, we just ask that it's $500 or more for a cost report. Once that cost report is submitted, it's submitted to, to us as North Commerce Management. We review based on bills that have been paid, and then we submit to our North Carolina Department of Public Safety Fiscal Section. They in turn pay the bill, and it should be, turnaround is usually within two to three weeks.
So who determines the substantially damage? So it's a FEMA adjuster? Or who makes that determination that your property is substantially damaged?
It is a subsan, it is a FEMA definition, but it's the local floodplain administrator.
So our, our local person here would make that determination that it is at that point?
Yes, ma'am. And he would, he or she would write that letter.
Does the hazard mitigation committee for the county get involved in this?
That is, that's entirely up to, as far as the, okay, so the county, the county has their own, they can apply separately from the city of New Bern.
In other words, I was on that hazard mitigation team for maybe about four or five years, and that was required by the county to have a hazard mitigation committee. And so I'm, I'm not quite sure, because we never had a hurricane at the time I was on, but when, when does that, the city of New Bern, unless it asks for a waiver from the Director of Emergency Management, cannot usurp the county. We have to, we have to go through the county for things. So I wasn't quite sure where the county's hazard mitigation committee came into play here.
You adopted that hazard mitigation plan separately from the county. So that plan is just as much yours as it is the county's. So you don't have to go through the county, that, these projects and these applications do not have to be approved by anybody but you.
Mayor, my understanding is, is from staff, is, is because of severity of this storm, we are going to be submitting everything on the city's behalf ourselves, and we will not be running through the county on those submissions.
I just have a quick question. So you said it's a reimbursement program, so I'm totally confused. So if I had a house that was damaged and I'm gonna get bought out, who pays me?
The city of New Bern.
This, ooh.
But the money comes from the next one.
But, right, but how long does it take? If we pay, if they paid me today, how long before we get reimbursed as a city?
If you put the cost report in tomorrow, it would come to us, and it could be as much as three weeks. Usually, it's less than that.
And then we own this property, and then is it our responsibility to demolish it and just have wetlands, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So essentially-
Do we get reimbursed for that part as well?
So what, what, what would happen is, in the process, you have a house that qualifies as substantially damaged, that needs some kind of mitigation, whether that's elevation or tear down, let's choose tear down for this one. So if it was identified and approved through the process, then at that point, the city, we would need to establish probably a fund to work out of for these specific works. And then what we would do is, we would perform the work as required. If it's a demo, then obviously, we would do the land acquisition, the title work, everything that would need to be done.
Right.
The abatement, if there's any kind of asbestos or lead-based paint stuff, whatever that may be, if there's any. Ultimately, the tear down, the demolition of it at the landfill, and then ultimately the reseeding to create green space for that particular lot. Once all of that work is completed, not necessarily all of it, we can submit it on, but as long as it's over $500, but what we typically do is probably close out a project, submit it to them, and then two to three weeks after that, is what I'm hearing, that, that those funds would be reimbursed. So what we would take is, we would take those funds, put them back into our seed money fund for this particular project, HMDP, public assistance project, and that's what, 407 project, that's what we would do.
One follow-up question. So if my house is worth $150,000, would I get paid $150,000? And then if it's, if I get paid $150,000 from the city, do you get the 150 back plus what the cost was to do the mitigation, the tear down, or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My question is that we have a very small supply of homes in the city of New Bern. From the last storm that we've come through here, the mitigation has been to tear down the homes, not raise the homes up. That is something that concerns me, that the tax value for the city of New Bern drops to the ground. We get nothing there for that. Is it any way that something needs to be looked at different in, in, in terms of how can we direct the water? Do you build a dam? Do you, do the core comes in to do something different? Because if you continue to tear a house down and just plant that area as a disaster area, we could know in certain parts of the city and see that, that it's beginning to dwindle away. There's no homes there, it's just open property.
Yes, sir. And that's one thing that you, as a city, by, by applying for this as the city, instead of going through Craven County to do this, you're controlling your own destiny. We have done some projects, some acquisition projects within the city limits of New Bern through Craven County. So that's one thing that, that as the city, you all need to really set your, understand what your priorities are, and how you want to see your, your city look going down the road in, in the future. A great example of what has been done is Charlotte Mecklenburg. Charlotte Mecklenburg has had a lot of flooding over the years. They created a stormwater management division, and they have done mitigation, they've done buyouts. They've been regular customers of our non-disaster programs, as well as our disaster programs. They're to the point now where they are mapping the future floodplain based on development practices. So there's a lot that goes into this, not just, not just today, not just tomorrow, looking, you know, 10, 10 years down the road, looking 20 years down the road at what the city looks like. So I, I think you're on the right track as far as looking down the road, it's just a matter of how you want to set your priorities at the local level. Do you want to just apply for acquisitions? Do you want to just apply for elevations? And what are you, what's the, what's the future plan with that resilient community?
From what I have seen, this one community is just wiping it completely out. There's nothing there. And, and we now need to look, like you said, to find out the direction that we're gonna take this here. Is it elevation? What is the direction we need to, to start planning for?
Yes, sir. In Hurricane Matthew, we had some counties that did not do anything but acquisition. We had others that only do elevation. So it's, again, it's, you have to control your own destiny to a, to a degree, and look down the road. Don't look tomorrow and don't look five years down the road. And just, you know, look 10, 15, 20 years down the road, and what, what that's, what that is gonna look like with flooding, through development services, through planning, through zoning. All of those are mitigation activities as well in the long term. Right now, these programs are more geared toward the short term and taking care of houses that are currently within that special flood hazard area.
Mark, can I-
Your, your SRL said 100%, right?
Yes, sir.
100%, and then your RL was 90-10?
Yes, sir.
So the 10% then would be what the city and the local match would be?
Yes, sir.
And the level below that was 25%, correct?
Yes, sir.
So like in Alderman Harris's example of her $150,000 house, it would have to be a SRL, deemed SRL in order to get that 100%?
Only for how, only for that, that particular program. Hazard mitigation assistance program, the state's picking up the 25% match. So it's, it's 100% covered for the local governments.
So Mark, currently, we haven't issued any letters at this point. We're still in the process of gathering all the information, is that correct? And we'll, we'll issue-
Yeah, we'll, we'll update the board after, after Mr. Cox completes his presentation on what we're doing, when the deadlines are, how, how people could submit their information for consideration of those programs. So as soon as Mr. Cox is done, we'll update you on all of that.
So any letters that we issue won't be issued until the January date?
Well, we won't be issuing any letters about approvals of such until we hear back from the state regarding whether or not the properties qualify, or what programs they would qualify for.
I've got three slides here that demonstrate the, that show you what the acquisition, demolition looks like, elevation, mitigation, reconstruction. This is a fire department that we demolished out, I believe it was out west, Westmaken County, or Maken County, Westmaken Fire Department. We tore, it was down by a river, repetitive flooding. It was acquired and then demoed, and all impervious surface on the property was removed. This is a home out of Bellhaven that was elevated above base flood elevation, plus whatever freeboard Bellhaven had at the time.
Well, let me ask you a question about that slide. I mean, that house to me looks like, I, I don't know if that's elevated enough. I hate to see federal government, state government, local government spend money on something that's gonna turn around and be raised again at some future date. And if, if you're doing one foot freeboard, that's gonna flood again, if it's eight-foot base flood elevation. So, I mean, I guess that's another topic, but, you know, I don't know what you would say the average, but I, I know what some houses it costs to raise by time to do engineering and, and everything else. And to think that, I mean, a house has potential for flooding again, did you run into a lot of that?
The homes that we have elevated, for the most part, no. Post Matthew, we, I'm sorry, so Matthew, a lot of the homes that, that were on the list got flooded again, and most, a lot of them got flooded higher than what they would have with, what they did with Matthew. So we are getting into that now.
I mean, do you see some, I don't know if that'd be on the state level through the Department of Emergency Management, that you would set a, some standard of three-foot freeboard or something to make sure that the monies are not wasted on the elevation?
We cannot, we cannot set a freeboard. We have to go by the local flood damage prevention ordinance.
I have a question.
Lots of questions.
Yeah. Look, so if I live in a home where I was not required to have flood insurance, am I able to come to the city and, and I got flooded out and my house is destroyed, am I able to come to the city and put my information in and ask to be considered for this program? Or is it only people that had flood insurance?
No, ma'am, this is anyone.
Anyone.
And it's repetitive, correct? It would have to be?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily? Okay.
Not for hazard mitigation grant program. This is the post-disaster, yes, ma'am. It's a lot of information, I understand.
Now, we know why our citizens stay confused, and this is overwhelming for so many citizens. So don't be frustrated with us asking questions, because our citizens are asking it of us, and we are trying to educate ourselves, as well as they're trying to educate themselves. And this is very overwhelming, I'm just gonna be honest with you.
Yes, ma'am. I understand, I've done plenty of public meetings in the last month, that it's getting to be a norm for me. One other option is mitigation reconstruction. This is where the house is damaged to the point where it's not feasible to elevate. It's damaged to that point where it's not feasible to elevate, or it's not feasible to elevate for other reasons, such as it could be slab on grade, could be termite damage, whatever reason. We can do a mitigation reconstruction- We can do a mitigation reconstruction project. One thing I want to say about mitigation reconstruction is we're not gonna build a mansion back. These are generally 1,000, 1,200 square foot, uh, square feet houses that are, we use modular homes as a, off-frame modular homes as the base price for these houses. FEMA has really limited what we can do with these. They've capped the, the amount of money we can spend at $150,000 in hard cost. So hard cost, you can look at anything swinging hammers, and $25,000 is soft cost. So that's the paperwork to manage the project. So when you get down to it, what these houses come out to be are very affordable living homes.
And this is in lieu of, so if I had a house and I get it tore down, instead of deeming it to be, you know, flood, wetlands, we can have you build a new house on there that will be feasible for flooding?
So it would be a modular home, which is built to international building code. It would have to be elevated to the, it would be off-frame, and it would have to be elevated to whatever the local flood damage prevention ordinance says. So if this says, if there's two feet of freeboard between what base flood elevation is, freeboard is base flood elevation-
Right.
-plus two feet, it would have to be elevated to that two-foot freeboard, if that's what your local-
So who would own the home?
I'm sorry?
Who would own the home?
The homeowner.
Okay, so that's, so me getting, oh, so instead of buyout, you demo my house and then build me a new one?
Yes.
To the standard of whatever FEMA is saying?
Is modular home the only option, though? Because there's a lot of HOAs and things that don't allow a modular home.
It is not the only option, but it is the cheapest option, and with a $150,000 hard cost budget, which includes demolition.
That's about all you can-
It, yeah, it gets you the most, it's the most, it's the biggest bang for your buck.
Even with all these, these new tiny house projects out there and what have you, I mean, I guess those are considered pretty much modular homes as well.
Yeah, but they are built on frame. These must be off-frame modulars. Yes, ma'am.
And when you say off-frame, a, an on-frame steel frame modular would not be approved, is that correct?
Correct.
So what, what he's talking about is off-frame where it's, it's modular, but it has a wood floor joist, no steel griddle or anything, correct?
Correct.
Do you have a picture of one?
I do not, we have only done one of these projects in North Carolina.
Oh, okay.
We have several on the books to do from Hurricane Matthew, but we have only completed one project, I believe it was in Craven County. Timeline for Hurricane Florence Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, September 14th, 2018 is when we got to our declaration, Presidential Disaster Declaration. That began our 12-month application period. We have 12 months from the date of declaration to get applications in and submit it to FEMA. It also began our 36-month period of performance on these grants. November, we should have received a 30-day lock-in. We actually should have received it in October, but we have not because of some bills that passed in October in Congress that changed some of the rules with hazard mitigation, which has caused some delays. December 2018 will be when the 407 projects, the acquisition projects that we are doing through the PA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program process, that's when those project, those letters of interest will be due to North Carolina Emergency Management by close of business that day. January, by, by the end of December, we will have identified which projects will be moving forward in the application process of 407 mitigation. January, we'll begin the application process for the expedited projects. February 8th of 2019, we will be, will be the close of the letter of interest period for the non-expedited projects, so that it could still be acquisition, elevation, mitigation, reconstruction, or stormwater projects. That, that will close in, on February 8th, and we will have the selection made in, in February as well and begin the application development project, process. And then March of 2019, we will receive six-month estimates for what we will receive for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Local application process, your local, I know Amanda has the property site inventory sheet or the homeowner application. It is a four-page application. It has all the information on it that we need to build these applications. The notice of funds availability went out today, yesterday, to our field staff, and were disseminated through the local emergency management officials. I highly recommend setting your own local priorities in a defensible fashion so that when somebody gets in and somebody doesn't, there's a, there's a reason they did not get accepted into the program. Letters of interest, that stuff is more for your staff. Let your, so I, I've talked to Amanda about letting us know if they need help with intake. This is a very daunting process for staff at the local level. We have, we can provide assistance to do application intake and help get information into a usable format if you, if they let us know. So it, it will be, take a lot of staff time for them to get this, to do the LOIs and as well as application development.
Normally, do you give assistance out normally? Do you think that we might need some assistance from you guys?
I'm sorry, sir, I couldn't hear you.
I said, do you think we might need some assistance from you guys, since you said this process is very lengthy?
Yes, sir, I would, I would not be surprised if your staff asked for assistance. It absolutely probably will need it. Once we receive the letters of interest, we will run them through to get a benefit cost ratio. That's through the benefit cost analysis tool. We'll score them on state priorities, and selections will made, will be made for the application development to begin. With the application development, we have, there's a lot of information that we need. Will not read all of this out to you unless you want me to, but there is a lot of information that has to happen or has to be received for each property. So if there's 100 properties, for example, if there's 100 properties, we need four pictures of each property. We need 400 pictures to submit with the application. Historic properties take a little more, we need a little more information for historic properties as well. The FEMA review process, most of this stuff takes, takes place at the same time simultaneously, but the environmental, historical, and tribal reviews have a certain amount of time that they have to actually, they have 30 days, tribes and the historical review have 30 days to actually review each project. So that sometimes could hold things up. The other piece is large project notifications. Any projects that are, that exceed $1 million will be submitted to Congress for the congressional, the North Carolina Congressional Delegation for announcement before it comes down to us. So it's likely that you might see something in the newspaper if it's over $1 million saying that this is coming, and you haven't heard about it yet. That's all I have.
Well, when you get over $1 million, don't we run to situations where you sequentially wanna keep it under imagination?
Not necessarily, no. Because you're, you're gonna probably do these projects in a phased project. So you're not gonna go in and buy out, if you submit 84 houses for acquisition, you wouldn't go in and buy out all 84 houses at the exact same time and then demolish them. So you would phase the projects through so that every so often you would get a reimbursement. Does that answer that question, or did I dance around it?
Well, New Bern is just a very unique historical city, and all the aldermen make some very good points. Alderman Kenzie's point particularly is, is something very concerning, you know. We don't want to totally become urban forest.
Right.
We have a lot of history in our city, we have a lot of culture. We want to protect that, the identity of who we are, what we are, where our future is. At the same time, it's almost like we need a strike team or a SCROM team to gather and simulate information to get a blend of what, what New Bern needs. I mean, this is just not a simple thing. Our elderly, in many cases, don't wanna, they don't wanna be elevated eight feet. They, they can't climb the stairs, or, I mean, some of them, you know, you get the elevator, that type thing. So again, New Bern's very unique. Alderman Odom, Jim, something?
A question for you. So you were kind of going down this road with your last statement. So if you have a neighborhood who has a street who historically has flooded over and over again, let's say that there's 10 houses on that street. Have you seen in, in the past, in your experience, the situation where you would go through and do the evaluation, all 10 houses may be submitted, but say only eight of them were approved? Is that feasible, or typically do you look at it as a whole?
We can look at it as a whole. We try and, we try to avoid that up and down checkerboard look. Bellhaven got into that a little bit, but you gotta also remember that this is a voluntary program. So just because neighbor one wants to do it, neighbor two wants to do it, doesn't mean neighbor three's gonna wanna do it. So there is, I, I see what you're saying, but there is that piece of it. That's more where we find that, that checkerboarding or the, the up and down look of a, of a street.
One of, one of the issues to your point, let's, let's, you know, choose, you know, John Street. I don't think we have a John Street in everyone, let's pick a street, huh?
We do have a John Street.
Did we have a John Street, okay.
Pick Monterey, that's my street.
Let's, let's choose something, anyways, any name street. So the issue is, when you start having this patchwork down through there, and let's say there's only one house that remains that, that didn't want to voluntarily submit to the HMGP process. The problem is, is you're maintaining a very large asset in a roadway that could be a half a mile long for one house that might remain entire, you know, in an entire neighborhood, if you go about that way. So there's lots of strategies we've gotta think through. Mr. Kenzie, you spoke on several of those there with the, the strategy that we've got to look at as a community. Not, not that we're, you know, typically government's not in it to make money, but ultimately, you know, to be able to continue to provide adequate police service, adequate fire service and everything else, you know, if we lose a very significant portion of our tax base, then we're gonna start running into some problems. Maintaining roads, all that kind of stuff. So I don't know whether it's a qualifying program to where you could say that buyouts, the only eligible buyouts we're gonna consider is if they relocate through a building program in the city of New Bern. I don't know whether that's possible or not, but, I mean, you could, you could work out something like that, maybe. I, I don't know, you guys tell me whether that's even legal or not. But, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to think outside the box to keep people here, but also to take care of the safety concerns and issues of people being flooded out and, and mitigate it through this process. So ultimately, 50 to 100,000-foot view type topics that the board needs to have some thoughts around and consider whenever we compile all this data and get ready to submit it for the North Carolina Emergency Management to consider.
Do we need to have a special meeting for that?
How are we gonna proceed? That's what I'm concerned.
I, I think right now, that, yes, at some point, but we're, we're in the midst of compiling information. Once we get that information, let us get it on a map with our GIS system and stuff like that so that we can see where the hotspots are, and then at that point, maybe we can start looking at and considering these strategies. But yes, I definitely think that we-
Now, is that like a closed session? Because I'm gonna talk about people's private areas, okay.
When, when, when is this due date?
So if we're gonna do the expedited process, it would be December 15th. If you don't do the expedited process, we're talking February 7th, February 8th.
So we've already been?
Yes, so that's, what's the next step? How do we speak, are you gonna, you're bringing up somebody else to speak to that, okay? We're ahead of the game here.
And I, I don't wanna leave out the other individuals who showed up. I know there's the lady from the State Historic Preservation Office, I believe, for historic properties, environmental guy. If there's any kind of questions related to those items, I think now's the time-
She's, she's with FEMA, she's our-
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Environment Historic Preservation and Lead. And then we have Mr. Jerry Frye in the back, who's ducking, that's with FEMA as well, flood, floodplain management and insurance. So if you have any questions, we can-
I'd like to hear from historic background. I, you know, our historic district here to us is very important. We have two, and those two areas were pretty hard hit. So, you know, lots of concerns in how we put it back together and what happens, and what does it look like to protect the integrity of the district that we've worked so hard to contain, but now there's issues. Do you raise the house? Now you've got this, you know, what happens to the form and rhythm that's so important in a district? You know, we, we need the assistance of what our best practices used in places like Charleston that have been hit so hard and other cities that have suffered the kind of damage we have that have historic districts, and what are the best practices they use? We could really use some assistance in knowing what the materials and things that they're using to rebuild with that, that might help us.
Yes, definitely. We would be happy to work with you and your staff, as well as the State Historic Preservation Office, and ensuring that we can provide you with best practices from some of those cities that you mentioned. It's definitely a challenge, and certain architecture is different in certain areas of the US, but there's, there's definitely a lot of things that you can do to elevate structures and still keep their historic integrity of the neighborhood. And then there's options such as landscaping or dry floodproofing. There's a lot of things that you can do to maintain your historic integrity. And I know that New Bern is, is very historic, and it is gonna be a sensitive project. But as part of the HMGP process, FEMA is required by law to follow through with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. So we will definitely be working closely with you all and the State Historic Office on this project. And essentially, what we try to do is avoid adverse effects to historic properties and districts. And if we can't avoid those, then we're gonna minimize them as much as possible by some of the things that we mentioned. And then the last resort is we mitigate those adverse effects. So if we can't avoid adverse effects to the property, then we will definitely mitigate those. And it's a process, and the public can be involved in that as well. So let's say we do have a historic property and it's gonna be demolished. Historic property definition is it's either listed on the national register or it's eligible to be listed on the national register. So if a homeowner wants to demolish that property, that would cause an adverse effect to that historic property. It's no longer there, the resource isn't available. So on the federal side, we would have to do something to make up for that adverse effect. And it could be something as, well, okay, this happened, it wasn't good, but now what can we do? Maybe we can make a community garden out of that space. Or maybe we can take funds to another building and rehab that building for a new use. So there's lots of different options that you can be creative with, and it's definitely a process where everyone can be involved. So, but like I said, we try to avoid that if possible and minimize. And if we have to go through that route, then we will, but we're here to support y'all, and we'll also be working closely with the State Historic Preservation Office on this as well.
Would you be able to come back and work with our local HBC, our Stark Preservation Commission? Because we hope that they're going to be doing some outreach and talking to people in our districts. So would you be able to come and do that as well?
Yes, we'd be happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
My question is for the gentleman there. So if we get to a point where we submit these letters and a homeowner is denied, because that's a question that has been asked, where do they go from here? I mean, their house is destroyed, they're flooded, and hypothetically, they get denied, they don't meet the qualifications. What, what's the alternative for this homeowner?
There are other options. CDBG is what we refer to as our- There are other options. CDBG is what we refer to as our, some of our state, CDBG D R employees refer to as the funding stream of last resort. That's where they would go into CDBG D R. There would also, there's usually some state funds that are available to do some projects as well.
Alderman, Mackenzie?
During the storm, we- We had to displace residents that live here. The family trailers at the time, they never came in for the disaster that we had. And we still have people that is displaced right now. They're all over the state right now. What do we need to do to try to get these people in some sort of homes? Where are you with that there?
That's really outside of my purview. I am strictly run this hazard mitigation grant program.
Ma'am, would you know that answer, or the young man in the back know that answer? Is anyone here could answer that? This is a question that's been to me, you know, they call me several times saying, well, is people still displaced? You know, they was living in our rec center and they still have nowhere to go. And so, I didn't know what the protocol was on for something like that.
That is a, usually FEMA individual assistance program that can address that.
Mr. Mackenzie, if you want to get with me sometime this week and let me know who those individuals are, what I can do is help you with that process. I think our center is still located at Rite Aid and providing some, but it's a very short window now. And so, we need to, if those people are still displaced and they need assistance, we need to get them there soon.
Got you. Okay. Very good, very good.
Any other questions on the board at this time?
I have some questions. I guess I'll direct it to you and Mark. I have, I have some residents here from the North Hills Drive area, and they have talked with me about wanting a buyout. And I know it's probably about, what, fifteen to twenty homes? And in this process, it's going to be left up to the city to make the decision on if these individual homeowners qualify for this program, for the 407 program? So, is that program based, the criteria that's needed for qualification? Is that going to be restrict, is that going to come from FEMA for the guidelines?
Yes, ma'am, there's a- There are guidelines that we use that are, that determine eligibility.
And now, those are the guidelines that the city was using when they going through that process of selecting these homes that?
The guidelines are very broad. So, we have to, the state brings in priorities. We have prioritized declared counties, we have residential homes owner occupied that are a priority. So, we have our own priorities as well. And so, the city would have to determine what your priorities are. And when I say what your priorities are, I mean, are you going to put applications in for acquisitions, elevations and mitigation reconstruction? Are you going to just do one? Just what your priorities are as a city?
I understand that, but I'm just saying that these individuals are saying, we want a buyout. So, that's going to be strictly left up to the city to determine, yes, we're going to give this individual a buyout? Or is it going to be determined basically on the criteria that FEMA uses to classify a house? And what, fifty percent, fifty-one percent damage or what? That's the process that I'm talking about, Mark. How is it going to be determined if one individual's home is fifty-one percent?
The one that's about the criteria, the SRL, RL?
Oh, going back to that?
Yeah.
Well, that's-
That's going to be kind of-
And that's kind of out? So, this is the 407 criteria. This is strictly for 407. It does not have to do with our normal, traditional 404 hazard mitigation projects. So, substantially damaged would be only those that are going to go through 407 and they are acquisition. These projects are, this is, so the deadline for these are that December fifteenth date, fourteenth date, I'm sorry, December fifteenth is Saturday. This is the December fourteenth date. These are only acquisitions and they must be substantially damaged. That does not mean that you can't put other properties in on, for the later date.
Let me give an example. Woodrow, where we had significant, where we have houses that don't exist on the foundations anymore, okay?
That's where the 407 comes in at?
Those are substantially damaged homes that would meet the criteria for 407 hazard mitigation funds. Meaning that at that point, that property, they would either go through an acquisition, and that's acquisition only, which means that that property would not be built upon again, and it would become green space and ultimately, the city would own it. And to never be built upon again. We could utilize it maybe for stormwater retention areas or whatever it may be, but that would be the intent of that program. Homes that had an inch of water in them, or maybe even a foot of water in them, that may have required, you know, drywall, maybe the loss of some appliances and some cabinets and things like that, probably are not going to qualify for substantially damaged properties, okay? So, then they would be, and if it's a repetitive nature, then they may fall into the submission application for the January deadline or February deadline.
Correct.
And that's where we would start looking at those.
All right, thank you. That explains it, Mark. Thank you very much.
So, what he's saying though is that as a city, we need to discuss on how we basically want our city to look like. If, I mean, everyone, if in that area, they all want to be bought out, we need to make a decision on whether we want it to be acquisition where it can never be rebuilt and we just have a whole bunch of green space, like that's, that lies within our decision? And now, is that something that we have to vote on and debate and get four votes?
If you're asking me, I don't know.
Well, attorney? How would that work?
I think the board, I think the board is certainly going to have to provide some staff and direction if they want to go one particular direction or not. You know, that definitely is some consideration for y'all.
I think, I think we're going to have to have a lot more information before we start having that conversation. We're going to need to look at these houses that have been submitted. Staff's going to have to look at that. You may not know exactly what's considered an SRL or an RL, but you've got a pretty good idea of what is. There's no need for us to probably sit here and debate, you know, North Hills Drive and what we're going to do there until we actually know whether it's even going to qualify or not.
That's correct.
Now, there's obviously some deadlines, probably for some areas that, I hate to say more pertinent, but those that have had more damage, I guess I'll say, than others, those are the ones that we need to expedite and move to the top of the list because we've got a quicker deadline that's approaching, more so than the one in January and February.
Correct. Yes, and what I would say is, is for the ones that are coming up in December, I think you're going to have, you know, I think you're going to have a limited amount of ones that will qualify for substantially damaged throughout our city. You will have a limited amount. What you will have, though, I mean, and I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be brash in any way towards substantially damaged because if a person lives in a home that was flooded out, then to them, it's substantially damaged. Because it's damaged their life. But ultimately, when, in the definition of the way it's analyzed with regards to the program, substantially damaged has, it's a different definition if you want to say that.
Yeah, I think he halfway answered it. Do you have a number yet?
We, we have the preliminary dashboard assessment that we did from day one to day three to five, whatever it was, that we completed on the, what we considered and deemed to be the assessed damages during that timeframe. Now, what we're doing is, is we're going through the application process where people are submitting this information so that we can understand what these substantial, and a lot of that's coming through the permit process that's been going on for the last sixty days of people going through the permit process and trying to get their homes restored, contractors coming in, getting estimates on what the work is, all kinds of different ways in which we're gathering that information. Jeff, you may be able to add some additional things, but, and then ultimately, it's folks submitting their applications. It's, they're submitting, you know, how much damage they've had on their home based on their estimates or based on the insurance that proceeds that they've been provided. So, a lot of that stuff comes into play and that's where we get that information.
But staff's going to have to be able to make a quick judgment call within the next couple of weeks on what is considered substantially damaged, correct?
I think we, you want to come up, Jeff, and speak from his end on what is your? Thank you. Yeah, Alderman Odom, that's actually the easy part, right? So, we've touched on it a lot, and I'm glad we've kind of landed on what substantially damage is because that's our first deadline and that's what I've been working on for the past two weeks. Is getting, getting the information from individuals and from citizens who are interested in the program. We currently have twenty-two right now. Sending my inspector out to another eight homes tomorrow to, for people that requested to be bought out, but we don't have any damage numbers on their property, so we're going to go out and take a look at those. But they're not all North Hills Drive, D versus circles, some of them, they're all over the, a lot of randoms throughout the city in neighborhoods where a whole street may have been flooded, but two, three people have asked, have to be brought out. And that's the decision the board has to make. Is that the kind of thing that y'all want to do? The information is easy to get. It's a lot of work, but it's not hard to find. We have a lot of it ourselves. So, that's the conversation that's important. At some point in the near future, we will have everybody that is interested in being bought out and is substantially damaged. That's a process that FEMA requires, a lot of insurance companies require, and that the city requires if you're going through some kind of, any kind of rebuilding after the storm. So, that's the easy part. The tough part is, do we want to do it or not and where?
And the substantially damaged calculation, does it factor in tax value or loss of tax value? Or is it just simply based off of the repair cost to fix the house?
The value is based off of either my staff, my inspection staff's opinion of what the repairs are or an actual estimate from a contractor. And then it's fifty percent of that value, and there's a multiplier from the tax assess of three percent. So, we add three percent to the tax value and that's essentially what the market value is. And then we would see whatever that damage number was for that reconstruction work.
Jeff, I want to just make sure, excuse me, a second, because there may be people out there, I want to repeat this, that are listening on Facebook. First of all, this is only for if you have to live in the city of New Bern limits, what we're talking about right now.
Correct, yes.
So, I just want to make sure, because I have had people reach out to me. You must live in the city of New Bern limits to move forward with this program we are speaking about this evening. Second thing is if you're in the audience, if you're listening tonight on Channel Three, you're on Facebook, and you feel your home has been damaged, fifty percent or more of the value of the house, they should reach out to you to have the process of having inspector come to see how substantially damaged they are.
And in a few minutes, I'll go over how to do that and show everybody how.
Just want to make sure that-
One thing I want to clarify, everybody is eligible for this, but we're only going to do the work for those living in the city limits.
Okay, sorry. Well, I just want to make sure because we have had some calls by other areas.
Those in the county, I had a couple from Trent Woods, I send them to my counterpart in the county and they take care of them.
I have a question for Jeff. Do you think the decision on how we should mitigate, whether we submit this and turn this into acquisition, do you think that would be something that would be best for the redevelopment commission? Because that's kind of what they're doing, they're redeveloping areas or no?
That's a two-part answer to your question. I think the redevelopment commission has an important role in that redevelopment boundary that we talked about, which we all know Duffy Field and Greater Duffy Field floods at a very alarming rate and how, in the future, how we're going to deal with that. That goes to what Mark was talking about earlier and having a plan and a resiliency plan and mitigation plan. They are, there are parts of Duffy Field that are still wet right now from the rain we had a few days ago. And those are things that we're looking at, and that's more of a long-term planning decision. And we can take advantage of, I know, poor choice of words, but disasters in the future to kind of implement those changes in the plan as we move forward. And we can seek funds from FEMA. Once we have an approved plan on what we're going to do, we can start to implement it by supplementing that with city effort and city funds if need be to make those changes. But a lot of, most of, a lot of flooding was outside that area too. So, the redevelopment commission really doesn't have much authority. Ah, yeah, nice try. I didn't, okay.
I mean, because that's going to be a tough topic to discuss.
Sure, but a lot of it is outside that boundary and they're not, that's not their jurisdiction to make those decisions.
Okay, I'm just trying to throw it over there, see if it will work. We ain't stick.
Half of it's still.
So, Jeff, and to the North Hill Drive residents who are sitting out here in the audience, so if they want a buyout, they need to contact your office so that you can have someone, an inspector or whomever goes over and look at their property to give them an assessment damage, correct?
We've already done that.
For the North Hills Drive area?
For the North Hill Drive area, absolutely. And the majority of those properties in the North Hills Drive area don't meet that fifty percent threshold. Some are real close. But regardless, that's not that they can't be part of the buyout. They can't beat that first deadline because it's not substantially damaged. But fully incorporate them into the next round. But we, one of the things too, I want to add, just the North Hills Drive people that we have been to were those that signed the petition that wanted to be part of the program. If there are others who are watching or streaming online that are seeing this for the first time that did not sign that petition, then they do need to contact our office.
Now, if they've already given their information, do you guys put them in the back file for the next submission? Or do they got to re-
Yes.
Okay, so they don't have to re-contact you again?
Correct. All I really, I mean, at a bare minimum, we do have, and again, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, we do have a kind of an application that we made that just has some very basic numbers, but all I, minimum, I just need a name and an address and a phone number where I can go from there. So, yeah. If everybody else is done, we can-
Yes, please.
So, is Colleen coming to help me? Thank you, Colleen. So, what we've done since the last meeting that we had, you know, we heard that there were some citizens that were still frustrated with the not knowing who to contact. So, I'll just talk to you about two things that we're doing. One is how we're getting our information out there, you know, to allow, to let people know if you have questions about Hurricane Florence and rebuilding or anything, for that matter, who to contact and what we're doing. All right, so, you know, very quickly, what we've done, just to get our, just to get our information out there for folks to be able to contact us, we've made a, just a kind of an informational, kind of right here, Hurricane Florence recovery questions. We put this in a, on some card stock. It's a half of a, eight and a half by eleven. I'll be delivering these to City Hall tomorrow. They're in my office. Anybody has any questions about it, just pick it up and you can hand these off to any of your citizens that have any questions. Additionally, Public Works has ordered seventy-five, a hundred signs, essentially, that they're little yard signs that they're going to be putting up in historic districts in other areas of town that seem to have a lot more damage than others. Just to get our number out there, that's the direct number to my assistant. It'll be right to me. And we'll take all your phone calls, answer all your questions, put you in the right direction. Secondly, it's how we are getting information about people who are interested in either the elevation program or the buyout. So, what we did here, Colleen and I got together right after our last meeting, right at the Board of Alderman meeting, and we put together a questionnaire that has some pretty good information for us, allows us to get going. This questionnaire is in my office at my front desk. So, a lot of the building and permitting obviously comes through my office because that's where it's, that's what we do. So, we're handing these out to people, people are feeling about handing them in to us. We've also put that same form online. Colleen will pull that up and show you. And in addition to this, I think we blitzed this out in all our public, all our media-
in the bottom right-hand corner, it's the first thing you see on the page once you click on that icon. We have it up here at the top. We've bolded that the deadline for submission is December 7th. We've also put a picture of what the form looks like. The information is also listed under the City of New Bern, same structure, it's the first thing you see on the page. Since it's a FEMA program, we've also put it at the top of the FEMA resources page. We have posted this information to our social media platforms daily, often several times daily. Our reach indicates we have reached over 13,000 people with this information just in social media. We have also placed two quarter-page ads in our local newspaper. The first one ran this past Sunday, the second one will run this coming Sunday on December 2nd, which we thought was pertinent since as of this Sunday, they'll only have a few days left to complete this form. And then one more place Jeff didn't mention, we also have them at the front desk of City Hall, so people can come, pick up the form, fill it out right there, and turn it in here at City Hall if they need to as well.
Just to be real clear too, as you heard Mr. Cox, Mr. Cox mentioned the deadline for the submission for us is the 15th of December.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth of December, sorry. So, we need to have the people's information so that staff can compile all of this, fill out all of the necessary documents that we have to, to get it in. That's the reason why you're seeing a December 7th deadline for us to be able to complete all of that work and have that submitted on the public's behalf or our citizens' behalf to the state for their consideration.
And these are for houses that have 50% or more substantial damage.
Yeah, those are the ones that... And that's what we're saying, is our staff need to evaluate that to determine whether it meets the substantial deadline.
But I want to be clear, you can still, please still submit if you're interested in either one of those programs, we just have a first hard deadline that is exclusively for the buyout program, and that is the December 7th deadline. Thus far, online, I've received 16, I think, of these forms, hand-delivered copies, another 10 or 12, and that's over and above the 15 substantial damage letters that we have issued already. So, I'm contacting those individuals that have, that we previously issued letters of substantial damage for and contacting them and seeing if they're interested in the program. Every single one of them is interested thus far, so we're pushing in the 30s here possibly for this first round of buyouts.
And keep in mind, the substantially damaged letters that we've already issued generally have been at the request of the homeowner because of their insurance requirements. So, that, when they know they have a house that's been substantially damaged, the insurance company is requesting that letter from us, so therefore, we generate that letter in our department, give it to the owner on their behalf, and then they're able to go to their insurance and say, "Look, I've got it, I've been deemed substantially damaged by the city's inspectors," if that's right.
Mark, we have a question on Facebook about FEMA. The individual says, "Is it correct that if they apply for SBA, the SBA loan, they won't qualify for any flood mitigation grants to include elevation if they got approved for the SBA?" Or is that not in your preview?
They will qualify.
Okay.
They will or will not?
They will.
They will. So, if they've got an SBA loan, they can still qualify for flood mitigation grants to include elevation?
Yes.
Okay.
This gets buried down into the weeds.
Understood.
There is some, there is some things that will come later, what's known as duplication of benefits, but some of that has been, that guidance hasn't come out from the Disaster Recovery Reform Act that was passed in October by Congress. So, there are some changes that are coming to that duplication of benefits and whether it applies to SBA or not.
Gotcha.
Right, and does that apply also for if an individual applied for IA, received the funds from FEMA and then decided to go through the buyout? Is that buyout funds less the amount of the FEMA funds received?
Potentially. If they didn't use the funds for what the funds were given for, and can prove that. So, if they received funds to repair their home and they didn't repair their home, or they don't have the receipts, it will be deducted. If they have proof that they repaired their home with the receipts, it will not be deducted.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome information. Thank you so much.
There are definitely some instances where people were provided, that individual assistance to repair their homes and then they were submitted, I'm not talking about previous disasters where they were submitted as part of a program that a county or a municipality submitted on behalf and they were approved for a mitigation net slash elevation buyout, whatever it may be. So, because ultimately, the HMGP program, correct me if I'm wrong, is to prevent future issues.
Right, right. Awesome. Okay.
I want to make an audience question.
Yeah, we were just talking about that. Mayor, would you allow anybody in the audience to ask questions?
That's up to you, but a motion, if you want to do that.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow any citizen in the audience who'd like to ask a question to do so.
Second.
Okay, motion second, would you like to limit the amount of time depending on the number of votes? If one person comes up with four minutes, it's fine.
Yes, that's fine. We can go by our standard rules.
What would be your limit?
Three minutes.
Four.
Let's see, how many records, four minutes?
Oh, four minutes. Four minutes, right on.
Okay, we'll just go with the standard policy. Yeah, we have a motion and a second, on favor motion. Say, I oppose the same. If anybody in the audience would like to come forward and ask questions, it would help if you do have questions to, we're not gonna be able to specifically answer a question about a particular home. If you have generalized questions concerning FEMA buyout or elevation, or other questions associated with Hurricane Florence, we'd be glad to, glad for you to come forward, ask questions or make comments.
All the experts are here, Sam.
That's right.
Mr. Spelman, if you'd come forward and just state your name and address for the record.
Willie Snow. I'm at 1402 Laurel. I used to be at 1504 Laurel in New Bern, in North Hill subdivision, but now I'm in the Farce Hill subdivision. Been there now for about 30 years. My question is that, in that area, since I've been there for the last three storms, that was more of a flooded in that area, this storm here was about the highest. The one before that, it did flood out quite a bit of houses. My question is, is that if you was flooded out this last time, but you was partly flooded out the second time, and then the first time, there was a tornado that came through. So, I was basically through quite a bit of them. So, my question is that, what if you've gotten flooded out twice in that area? You don't want to go back to the area, I mean, you can start it over twice, now this will be the third time. So...
Would you like to ask that question, Sam?
I'm not sure I call for the question.
Go up to the podium, he'll...
He's been flooded out two times and he was wondering what his options are.
Well, is it option the third time? I mean, if you didn't want to leave?
You can elevate, there is that option. If you have flood insurance, the ICC will kick in and help to offset the cost of elevation. If you don't want to leave, I can't really, chances are you're gonna get flooded out again.
Right, right.
So...
But what if you wanted to?
If you want to leave, then there's the buyout program, there's the normal option of selling out. I really don't, it's entirely up to you.
Since the last, since the last, the first time around, the property value decreased by 20,000. That is my concern now with, are we gonna end up with another decrease in property?
Well, Mr. Snow, like I was saying, trying to answer a particular question, I believe your house is split level.
Yes, yes, I am.
Part of it on slab and then crawl space area. So, again, each one of these homes is gonna be a very unique situation. Obviously, your home versus your neighbor that's on a very homogeneous, one-story ranch home that's easily elevated is gonna be a different scenario from your split level. And these are the questions that experts with the staff are gonna have to go out and mitigate on an individual basis, the homes. So, I mean, there would not be an answer to that question, not tonight. Something to add to what Mr. Snow is asking is that, again, empirical data shows and satellite imaging shows, past, present, and future, he is being hit with quite an inundation of flood events. So, I think his question was, is problematically, he has a pattern of flooding and versus somebody that maybe an anomaly of just cascading effect of water flooded the home, is his gonna have I mean, I'm sure you got a check-off grid type system to go through this and probably then you add these things up because of all of the dynamics of a particular case.
That's correct. And a lot of it's gonna depend on what the benefit-cost analysis comes out with. Benefit-cost analysis will be run on each property. There is, there's two things that I missed saying that I would like to add to. One is, we do have some pre-calculated benefits. I think I did mention the pre-calculated benefits. For a buyout, it's $276,000 total project cost. Appraisals with buyouts. We do do pre-disaster appraisals for each buyout. So, that would be what the house was worth the day before the disaster, before everything was demolished. So, it's not, it's not current value.
You would do a retroactive appraisal, so?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, and with, you know, patterns of flooding, you're right, I would agree that he is likely going to flood again based on the patterns.
Mr. Sam, have you submitted your name to...
No, I moved up elevation level, but when the flood level changed, it put me in it about 45%. So, this time, it came up to the door. So, basically, I was okay, but if you got down to the, to the street, it was like three feet. So, I don't know if I can, I might move up a little more of him.
Well, to be considered, you have to submit your name to our planning department and they can add you, I'm assuming, add to the list for consideration in January.
All of these particular cases are gonna be individual case-by-case basis. They will be analyzed based on, number one, the initial deadline being substantially damaged properties. If those are substantially damaged and the people are willing for the buyout, that will be the first deadline. Second deadline, which will be coming up in February, that's the individuals where you're looking at elevations or you're looking at other buyout particular programs. And they will be based upon, you know, I'm sure there's probably some criteria in there that's based on repetitive loss or substantial repetitive loss. I mean, that's, that's things that we've got to look at for the future and obviously, the February deadline comes in. But if Mr. Snow, it sounds like to me, probably, if it just got to his doorway, I'm very seriously doubting that it was substantially damaged. And, you know, it probably flooded his yard, may have gotten his crawl space a little bit or something like that, but I'm gonna doubt that it probably qualifies for substantially damage. So, therefore, and like I said, it's gotta be a case-by-case basis until you submit your application and the justification on what the damage is and our staff to go out there and look at it, we don't know. But I would advise you do that if you're interested.
Right, thank you.
But then the retrospective value would be placed on historical comparable data prior to the flood event? Yes, ma'am?
I have worked with some of the people over in the North Hills Drive territory and I have in my hand the tax records from 2010.
Did you state your name in the register, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tucker Gonzalez. What, do I need my address?
Yes, ma'am, for record.
125 Turkey Quarter Creek Road, Coast City, North Carolina, 28523. Anyway, some of these homes from 2010 to 2016 dropped in value as much as $40,000. They are going to drop that much yet again, which will put some of these homes at 50% what they were originally bought for in the 1950s and 1960s. The other problem, which was brought up actually by the city's engineer when we came in and talked with them, was that the continual flooding of these properties can mess up the foundations. Many of these properties have flooded now three times, some of them four. So, whether the houses have been raised or not, the foundations have been compromised. So, whether it looks like it is, you know, not a 50% loss doesn't mean it's not a 50% loss. And it was my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the first gentleman said that the city as a board could elect to, to hold out a neighborhood depending on what the results were from the person, so that your investigator, whatever the title is. So, if he comes back and says, "Yes, that's a problem, the foundations could be a problem." Yes, raising these houses for, and they're mostly elderly citizens, is going to be a problem. Yes, it's going to continue to flood, which also the engineer said, because it's now in a bowl because of the development that was built, the meadows above it, and because the creek mine had quit pumping. So, it is going to continue to flood. So, to me, for these people, this, this is, they are a priority because they are definitely gonna flood again. And the first time they flooded was Tropical Storm Nicole, it wasn't even a hurricane. So, please, I'm just asking this board if they will kind of stand with this group and help the ones that want to get out, get out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else would like to, Mr. Spelman, would you like to come up, sir? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Thomas Spelman, and basically, I received...
Tom, what was your street address?
2604 North Hills Drive. I'm one of the highest houses on the street. I've been flooded three times. This is the first time the water came inside the house. But the last two times, you could pick up the register on the floor and there's the water. So, the beams underneath the house have been flooded three times. The plywood on the subflooring has been flooded three times. The insulation drops to the ground, you know, all three times. But this time around, I was told I didn't qualify for substantial damage. The insurance companies paid me $79,000. Now, that's substantial. That's more than 50% of what my house is worth. And according to the last lady, it's probably five times more than the house is worth. So, it's, my question is, if I put this money into the house, is it like putting money in a toilet and waiting for it to flush again?
I think that's two separate scenarios. In other words, you got the, yeah, if you're in Zone AE and you have, you got, you got flood insurance and they paid you 79,000, that's one side of the pancake. And the other side is, is the mitigation of either elevation or buyout.
Well, I was told I didn't qualify.
But I'm saying, I don't think that that has anything to do with the 50% rule that what you got paid by insurance.
What I was paid by the...
Jerry's coming up and I want him to get a little deeper into what's...
Because that, that's maybe now is based on a, an adjuster coming out and evaluating your loss. Go ahead, sir.
Why not lift the house up and not have to pay me every time it floods?
So, substantially damaged is, there's a lot of, there's a definition for substantially damaged, and I'm gonna let Jerry with FEMA Flood Management and Insurance kind of explain that a little bit, please.
Yeah, you can use any methodology you want to.
Mr. Fry, would you state what your title and what you do?
Jerry Fry, FEMA Flood Management and Insurance, sorry.
You know, in the beginning, before the hurricane, I think everybody thought that FEMA was FEMA was FEMA, but there are so many different divisions and titles and, and, go ahead.
Okay. Well, there's several different ways that you can make a determination for substantial damage. Number one, you can use insurance, and if the insurance payout is greater than or exceeds 50% of the value of the structure, then that can be a determining factor. Number two, you can use the substantial damage software that FEMA provides to communities. It's free. It's free, it's there, it's just twelve elements that people look at, and if it comes up to a fifty percent or greater than it's determined. They can use tax-assessed value, plus the local cost adjustment factor. You can use a, an assess, excuse me, an appraisal, you know, any type of methodology. The determination that he is making that says that $79,000 was paid out, if he uses that and the city will give him a determination letter that says he's substantially damaged, then he can get an additional $30,000 of increased cost of compliance to help him with the elevation project that he would like to do. Okay? So, that is available. So, that, the city has to make that determination. We can, we can assist with data collection if they need it, but the city ultimately has to make the determination. There's another thing that you guys have not mentioned tonight that I've looked up, and in your flood ordinance, it basically says that if you were damaged greater than twenty-five percent over any ten-year given period, twice, then that is considered a substantial damage. So, what he is saying is, he could have been substantially damaged more than twice over that ten-year timeframe. So, it is in your ordinance, I looked it up last week. So, you just double-check that. I made, I looked it up on your, I Googled it, so you can, you can double-check that, but make sure. And then there is that two-foot, two-foot freeboard requirements, and whatever the BFE, Base Flood Elevation, plus the two feet is required.
But if, if a buyout, let's say, was 150, and a person receives $79,000 from an adjuster going out and looking at the home and determining damages, is the 79 gonna be deducted, subtracted from the 150?
If he does, if he goes in and puts, and starts putting that funding toward the repairing of the house, then whatever he has put into the house would not be a duplication of benefits. If he takes that $79,000 and goes out and buys a new Mercedes, then yes, it's gonna be deducted from the 150. Clear as mud?
Is there anything else that we missed that you might could help us with, that you think is worthy noting?
Sir, Mr. Stevens has my, my contact information. I'm in Raleigh. I'm not, I'm from North Carolina, so I'm really not going anywhere. So, you know, if you need anything from me, all you gotta do is reach out, and he knows that I'm available at any time. So, okay?
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to mention here was the, the $27,000 of that was personal property inside the house that I was insured for. $54,000 was for the house itself and the appliances that are covered. But I mean, it's, it's, it's just, when you get this over and over again, three times around, you know, the first couple of times, I was a little bit luckier and only had to replace the heat pump twice, and the, you know, stuff underneath the house wound up in around the $12,000 range. But you keep doing this over and over again, it's, it's like peeing upstream. I would think for the benefit of the insurance company, they'd wanna raise these houses. Also, for the city, you wanna have uniformity. You don't wanna have half the houses on the street lifted up ten feet, and the rest of us sitting on the ground. It looks terrible, and it's really bad if you're trying to sell a house. Oh, well, why are these houses all way up here? And these houses are down here, that you're trying to sell us this house down here? Nobody wants to buy them. You can't give them away.
Anybody else? Oh, yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Robert Benjamin, and I reside at 2608 North Hills Drive. And I fall in the same category as, as Tom. I received a substantial payout from my insurance, and I had been sitting here tonight, and I was listening about this substantial damage. So, basically, what I just learned tonight is that my home did sustain substantial damage. And what I'm in the process of doing is, I'm going in, I'm making the necessary repairs. And that was a question that I had coming forward tonight. If I go in and I make all these repairs, and now here it is saying that I've had substantial damage, the house has to be razed, or qualify for a buyout, then what happens to all this money that I've already put into the house?
It goes, I mean, if you do a buyout, we give you the value of your home, and it, that's what, as if you were selling your house to a local, to some, a personal, another person. The money you put into the house, if you receive funds for insurance to repair the house, that was to get you back in your place. So, it did what it was supposed to do in the interim between being damaged with Hurricane Florence and/or other hurricanes, and the buyout process, or the elevation process. Does that answer the question?
Well, I think it answers the question, other than, I know there were some incidents in a particular where there was not FEMA buyout or elevation money, particularly buyout, and so I know folks that got FEMA proceeds to repair, and then later there was buyout money available. I don't know if it's through community block disaster relief or what, but I know at least one that got bought out, and then they demolished the home. So, I think the question is, is, you know, if you get $50,000, repair your home, and then a buyout happens through disaster, community block grant, disaster relief money, if that money happened ten years from now, then the $50,000 would probably have nothing to do with anything. But if, if the buyout came thirty days later, I don't know how that algorithm works as far as determining the proceeds from somebody that's already received $50,000. The question that a lot of residents have in New Bern is this, I mean, this is the fundamental question. Do I repair my home or not? I don't wanna repair my home if I'm gonna get bought out. I don't wanna repair my home if I got a faulty foundation, as Victor was talking. So, you know, the residents are seeking relief in the form of, of somebody to guide them, if it's some grant that we can get to go in and, and get, ten engineers go around the city and, and talk and counsel our residents, because there's just all kind of questions out there, and each one of these homes has a different problem. Mark, how many do we have right now still without power? About 600?
It's probably gone now. Charlie, do you?
And our systems are just like, what do I do?
Any idea?
Do I repair, do I not? Do I get bought out? Do I get elevated?
So, we're about 250 at this point.
Okay.
That's good news.
I think what I've kinda heard in synopsis to answer a little bit of your, your question there is, it would not be applicable for, or, they would not consider where, if you're sitting around waiting to determine whether a buyout, and you're just holding on to that money and not doing anything with it, hoping that your house gets bought out, that way you get to keep that money in pocket, plus get bought out, is gonna happen as in a pre-disaster buyout. I don't, basically, what I'm hearing is, is they would deduct that if you have not spent it on repairing your home. So, what my advice would be is...
Document everything.
Yes, document, but, but if you're, if you're doing that work and you're showing progress towards it, then, then that's what the key point is.
Yeah, and one of the things that's, that's really critical that we, that we're kinda losing sight of is, the ordinance that you have in place has to be enforced, and if your property is considered substantially damaged, as we've talked about several times, then it has to be brought into current coding compliance, whether it's through acquisition or elevation.
You're talking about the 25 percent?
Sorry, pardon me?
You're talking about the 25 percent in two years?
No, sir. I'm talking about if, if we take the hazard mitigation grant program away, we're just dealing with the community. If it's just a regular flood, or anything of that nature, not a presidentially declared disaster, but, but the definition of a flood, and his, we got two or more properties that are damaged, and one of them is greater than 50 percent, and it's not in current coding compliance, that property is required by your ordinance to be brought into that current coding compliance. And that's bringing up the elevation, plus the two-foot freeboard requirement, plus any other local international building codes that you have in standard. So, that is a requirement that is, that is incumbent upon every participating community within the NFIP. So, it's, it's a challenge for every community to go out there and find funding sources to bring those homes into current coding compliance. It is a challenge. CDBG funding is available, DR, excuse me, CDBGDR is available. Hazard mitigation grant funding is available. But again, if that property is not brought into current coding compliance, then this community runs the risk of being placed on probation from the NFIP, which means all the thousands of people that have flood insurance in, in the city of New Bern would not be eligible to buy. You don't have to worry about a real estate market if you can't sell flood insurance, because there's not gonna be one. So, we just have to keep that in mind and let that ordinance drive through the substantial damage process. You know, is it, is it fair to everybody? No. The biggest problem that I hear is, the ones that are damaged the greatest are the ones that can't afford to be repaired or elevated. So, that's where the hazard mitigation grant program, that's where this community block development grant, that disaster recovery funds come from. USDA has funding available. There's all kinds of sources out there. And so, I'm done.
I'm impressed. Do you have a question?
Well, yes, this is something that I haven't heard tonight, and I just want the residents to know of the North Hills Drive area and the city as well, that within your, the funds that you may receive from the mitigation, if you have a mortgage on your home, that mortgage is gonna have to be paid, correct?
That is correct.
So, that money is gonna be subtracted from what you receive from that buyout?
Well, it, that depends on the lending institute. Some lending institutes will apply that money directly toward the mortgage, because the mortgage, it is made out to both the lending institute as well as the, as well as the person that owns the home. So, that is a, that is a, that needs to be taken up with the State Banking Commission, not with the NFIP.
Another complication. You know, it's interesting, but we have people, of course, watching our Facebook Live tonight that do not live in the city, and are asking how they can get in touch with these gentlemen to ask questions, because they live outside, they live in the county, and the county, I don't know, has not provided information like this. Can they contact...
I will make sure that you can put my email address on Facebook if you'd like before I leave here.
That would be great. And what about you, Ryan? You don't want anybody to know where you're at?
Actually, mine's on FEMA's website. Mine's on, mine's on FEMA's website as the state hazard mitigation officer, but I'll make sure you get that.
Over there, you have a question?
Yes, sir. I asked this of Maria when she was here earlier with FEMA a few weeks ago. Personally, I've received more information, tangible information tonight than I think we have at any other meeting we've had so far. It is still very overwhelming, and fortunately, I did not experience any damage, and I can only imagine what those folks and citizens who did, what they're going through right now. And New Bern's not the first area that's gone through a disaster, so this has happened before. And I asked Maria this, and I didn't get an answer, or either it wasn't available, but is there a way, and I'm willing to, to make a motion if need be, but the city of New Bern, to put some staff hours and manpower behind this, but we need to get the powers-to-be that's got the knowledge of all these different situations together. And we need to come up with, whether it's a website, whether it's a flow chart, but we need something that we can provide our citizens that says, my home was damaged. Step one. Step two, was it 50 percent or more? Okay? Here's how you find out. I found out there's a calculator tonight online that FEMA has. It's something that they can go in and put their information in, and if, if you qualify, then you move to this side of the chart. But it just walks you through, step by step, what is available to the citizens, because they don't know. I don't know as an elected official, and I guarantee you, they don't know. And we've had some officials from FEMA and other places that have stood at that podium, and they didn't know. So, we've got to get to a point where we get citizens some answers, and again, if the city of New Bern needs to step up to the plate, if we need to hire somebody to do this, then so be it, but we need to make some decisions, and we need to make them now.
We are putting together, not we, the Community Education Outreach Platform with FEMA, is putting together a series of workshops to come to communities on either a Tuesday or a Thursday, and put, provide a workshop, an all-day workshop, and have subject matter experts there to talk with people about any, any topic that they wanna talk about. Unfortunately, those, those workshops will not begin until January, but we're, we're having to use disaster recovery staff, disaster recovery center staff, and they're not available, because we have, still have several disaster recovery centers open. But they will be coming. I will make sure when I get back to Raleigh tomorrow, tonight, and tomorrow morning, first thing, I will reach out to the program group supervisor for CEO and put the city of New Bern on their radar.
I appreciate that.
We'd like to be the first meeting.
Actually, sir, I think Lumberton is the first meeting.
Or we'd be the second meeting.
I'll make sure that we get that on, on board.
Thank you.
Okay. What else do we have on the side of tonight, Mr. Stevens?
I don't think that's it, sir.
Appointment?
Did anybody else wanna come up and talk and make questions or comments?
Mr. Spelman, you've already told, I'm sorry, sir.
Mr. Fong.
Make it quick.
We require an engineer from Holland.
Sir?
We require an engineer from Holland.
Well, we have, we're, we're waiting on a, so we are, he did do a program on, I believe it was Monday or Tuesday, and we, they had trouble transmitting it, so as soon as we get the video, we'll post it, and he did address New Bern. It's Mr. Ovink, and he does want to come to New Bern. So, if we can get him here, we would like that, but he is the world, he's the World Flood Ambassador, I think his title is. He is. He is. He's the one that, you know, did all the flood gates and did their whole program over there.
And I know Alderman Kinsey's gotta come in. I just want to, I wanna thank the Alderman, and I wanna thank a lot of the citizens in New Bern. You've all had good questions, and we are taking everything anybody is asking or offering as advice or comments and or advisement, as we continue to process this information and bring New Bern back bigger and better. Alderman Kinsey?
I wanna take the lead along with Alderman Odom about what the last comment he just made, and how soon can we move forward on his suggestion tonight in putting this into work? You know, can we make that a motion tonight?
Well, let's go back to Alderman. Alderman, do you wanna recite again what you...
Well, Mayor, this storm happened on September the 14th.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how many meetings we've had since then, but we've talked about some ideas, we've talked about some thoughts, matter of fact, and I looked through the minutes that we just approved. Mr. Sabatelli, the mayor asked at the last meeting, can we use CDBG money, or, I'm sorry, community development money to fund a consultant for IHE work? Do we have an answer to that?
Yes. Well, I think we, we are, we have worked, I will tell you, since that last meeting, it's been the committee of myself, Alderman Astor, and Alderman Best, because we had the three really flooded areas. We've met with the city attorney, with the city manager, and we've also, and he'll give that in his report tonight, hired a consultant to write grants that will do that, where we can, I believe, we may be able to get some reimbursements for those. They are looking into that, but we are taking steps. We've talked about several different things to do a long-term strategic plan, as well as have somebody for the everyday, just what you see now, all the postings that Colleen talked about tonight, is what we talked about in our meeting. It was important to get it up on the website. But I still think the step you spoke about is just another thing in trying to bring all the information together. We have to understand that everybody's not technologically savvy, so we have to have a way for our citizens to reach us, get the information that don't wanna be on Facebook or don't wanna be on, you know, email or whatever.
And I, I think, I think you brought up a great point and segue that I'm gonna use. A lot of times, whether it's business or personal, when you have issues, a lot of times it boils down to communication, and oftentimes, it's a lack of communication. I think that there has been an enormous amount of work put in by this city, by our staff, by this board, and I don't think that information has gotten out to the public, because when I'm getting calls, fortunately, Ward 6 fared pretty well during the storm, but when I'm getting calls from other citizens throughout the city about issues that they're having, and they're saying, well, the city's not doing anything, okay? That's, that's not true. And I, I won't, I don't know how we need to do it, but we need to enumerate all the meetings that's been held. Mayor, you, I think you met with Secretary of Education, you met with Secretary of HUD... You met with Secretary of HUD. Mr. Stevens and I, on our trip to Washington DC, we met with Congressman Jones. We met with Senator Burr and Senator Tillis. We need to get all of that information listed and we need to have it plain, as Alderman Beagle said, four or five-year-old to understand. And we need to get that information out to the public. It needs to be on Facebook. It needs to be on City TV3. If we need to put an ad in the Sun Journal like we've done with some other things, we need to get that information out so that citizens know what the city is doing to help them. But secondly, like I said earlier, we've got to get something in their hands so they understand what options are available to them. They're sitting out there wondering, "I want to get my house bought out." Well, their house may have been flooded three times, but maybe it only got in the crawl space. After we sit here tonight, I can't tell you if that qualifies as substantially damaged or not. Does it? If their house flooded three times and it was only in the crawl space?
If indeed your ordinance has that 25% repetitive loss rule in there, then yes, it does. Because it falls within that definition. There are very few participating communities that have that repetitive loss clause in there. This happens to be one. It's very difficult to manage and monitor simply because if you've got water in the, in the, two inches of water, it may not be substantially damaged, but if you go in there and do, even if you improve it up to 25%, that constitutes substantial improvement, which falls in that same definition of substantial damage. So those two things go hand in hand, substantial damage, substantial improvement. So if it falls within that 10-year timeframe and you do 25% improvements over that, twice over a 10-year timeframe, has to be brought into current code of compliance. Potentially, it could be, sir.
Go ahead, Alderman Harris.
So something that just popped in my head possibly based on what Alderman Odom was saying about getting information out would be, I know that we are looking for people to submit their buyout process and that due date is coming and passing, but for the second part of it, why, if there's a way to create some sort of system with the utility department where people live in the city of New Bern, where you just send out the information with their bill because everybody gets their bill, look at it, maybe there's a possibility that will work to get it out to them to say, "Hey, if you feel you had some sort of damage or anything like that, maybe to reach out that way as well because it's already going out and it's already in the cost of putting out there." That's your suggestion.
My question?
Not to put work on you, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying, type a little note on there or whatever. It's already going out, it's already being paid for, it's not more expense on us. But you're able to, I'm pretty sure you can have the people that live in Craven County and the people that are in the city of New Bern where you can send out.
That sounds like a good source.
Alderman Astor, go ahead, sir. Do you have a question?
No, I have just a statement. We have, we've listened to a group of citizens that basically have said that we're not getting the information to them. And I think as a result of that, we have reacted. Like Jeff said, there was a nice ad in the newspaper with all the information. We've established a hotline phone number, which will be on yard signs that will be placed throughout the city, you know, in the damaged areas here in the next few days. We have educated the staff. They have a phone numbers of who you can contact, whatever your problem might be. If you need questions by FEMA, they can direct you to FEMA. If you have questions concerning a building inspector, they can direct you to the building inspector. We've posted it on our websites. We've posted it on the television, TV, the city TV that we have. I'm not so sure how else we can get the information out to them. It's been all over the social media.
Just add sort of volunteer groups to help.
Yeah, yeah. But the phone number, and I'll repeat the phone number of Jeff, you'll give it to me.
639-7581.
So if anyone inside the city has a question concerning your rebuild process, whether you want to be bought out by FEMA, whether you want to be elevated, whether you need wood versus metal or whatever, that's the number that you would call and they will direct you to the right person. Now, I would like to take that one step further if someone, which probably won't be, only one of two of my houses or constituents were, might be interested in it. But if you have a question that is concerning someone from the third ward, I'd like to know who that person is and their phone number so I can follow up with them to make sure they got their questions answered. I think that's the big thing is, is that the follow-up has to be taken care of. So, you know, I would ask that if you get some, a question from someone in the third ward, if you can ask, you know, send me their, an email with their name and phone number, I would certainly like to follow up with them and make sure that your questions were answered. So I don't know what else we can do. Mr. Stevens, do you have any other suggestions?
We've done everything that we possibly can do. I think it's just.
We've established the hotline, like was asked. We've put the information in the newspaper, like was asked. We're putting the information on the social media and we're getting ready to put signs up in the area that's affected. So what, do you have any others, anything else that you recommend that we do?
I mean, we've, we're trying to get the information out there as best we can, sir.
I understand.
And we've heard it from the folks and, and I mean, you know, we've got so many different ways that information is obtained by folks these days. Whether it's the newspaper, we listened. We've ran two ads. Whether that's you driving around in your car eight hours a day, well, we're going to post stuff in neighborhoods. That's going to be signs. We went and got signs. We are, we've got stuff available at City Hall. All you got to do is come see us.
Purchase a billboard.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of.
Well, I think the bottom line is, is that phone number is the key.
That is.
You know, you've asked, the citizens asked us to establish a hotline phone number. We have done so. And, you know, if you have questions, it doesn't make any difference what the question is. If it's dealing with Florence Hurricane Florence and you need some assistance with it, call us and we'll help you.
And also, that information can be put on Channel 12?
I'm not sure about Channel 12, but I know the tech channel we have, whether the news channel 12 chooses to run it, that's their choice. But I mean, every bit of media information that we submit out, Colleen sends to all the news outlets.
I mean, we've even arranged to have the experts here tonight so people could ask them questions directly.
Is this form for the buyout, is it in a fillable PDF format where they can fill it out and email it? No. So you have to?
Yeah, absolutely. Online.
Online, you can download it and email it off so you don't have to do it, okay? The person online.
Every single way that you can do it, we have done it for. We've done everything we can do possibly for what's going on, so.
Alderman Kinsey, do you have something?
Yes. I still agree with Alderman Odom. No one knew that you, you guys went to DC to learn the things that you knew, learn about to come back to help the city to get things speeding, get things going. It's a lot of organizations here that's doing a lot of different things, doing good things. But I think on one half, that everybody needs to be on the same page where everybody would know what everyone is doing. You know, one can't be doing this over here, one over here, one over here. Everybody needs to come together where everybody would know exactly what's happening. And that's something that I've seen that's been going on. But hopefully that we can come together and work this situation out, that everyone can benefit from it the right way.
Okay, I do, I would like you to be sure to tell Director Sprayberry that we appreciated him taking, this is gentleman in charge of the whole state, Director of Emergency Management. He took the time to meet with the manager, manager Mark Stevens and myself and the mayor of Wilmington and the assistant manager of Pender County and the mayor of Surf City. And he spent a lot of time with us after the Metro Mayor's meeting. And then, I mean, we had a very important question concerning Army Corps Engineers and I think by the time I got back in New Bern, he'd already responded to the manager and myself. So, you know, I can't ask for any more from Emergency Management, but don't slack off now. But that's a compliment that you guys are really doing a great job for the citizens and we appreciate all you're doing.
Okay, so. Are you going to be around for a few minutes following, maybe in case somebody wanted to come up and ask you a question or two?
Great.
That's great. Thank you so much.
We're asking you not to run.
Look, and I would encourage the board, if anytime in between the two weeks meeting, if we need to meet, I'm just speaking for me, I'm ready for any kind of meeting about anything. But I would stress to staff to, you know, I can't, I can't send you guys emails and that would be a quorum, but the staff can send us emails and I would encourage staff on everything going on, immediately what happens to inundate us with this information so we can, we can get it out there to the public. And again, I mentioned, we met with the volunteer groups today. I'm sure they would do everything they could to get this information out. So anybody else have anything on the side to bring up?
Okay, this time, we are going to go to appointments, starting with Alderman Beagle.
I have none, Mayor.
Alderman Harris.
I have none.
Alderman Astor. Alderman Kinsey.
No, sir.
Alderman Odom.
No, deny, sir.
Okay, this time we're going to go to the attorney's report.
Nothing important, Matt, Mayor.
City manager's report.
Several things, Mayor. I know it's been a long meeting, but if you'll just bear with me real quick. I do want to remind the public that another thing that we've done during the hurricane will come to an end. That is the late payment penalties, delinquent fees and other collection fees associated with Hurricane Florence will no longer be waived after December the 7th. I just wanted to remind everyone, those have been waived since the event and will, and continue to be waived until December the 7th. So I wanted to make sure that the public is aware of that. If there are individuals who have issues with being able to catch up with that, they need to contact our utility business office to have that discussion with them and our staff have already been updated on how to handle those situations. So we advise them to please do so. Secondly, I would like for the board, if you would, to start thinking of dates and topics for our January, February retreat, whatever we're choosing as the date. So if y'all will, please start thinking about that. I don't need to know today, but we do, as staff, need to start preparing for that, for any items that the board so chooses specifically that they want to discuss. I know there may be some topics that we want to discuss specifically with the board to get some direction on, but if there's any on your end, we would like to know those as soon as possible so we can start preparing and gathering information, researching, whatever we need to do. Additionally, we need to set those dates. We don't have to do it tonight, but if we, if you choose to do it tonight, that's fine. But obviously, we only have one meeting in December, so we do need to set that relatively soon so that we can work with everyone's schedules and try to get that established. Finally, I want to report on some of the activities that we're doing. Obviously, y'all mentioned the DC trip. Alderman Odom have done, have gone to do that. The mayor and I, we went to DC as well, met with multiple agencies. I think I talked about that during our last meeting, so I'm not going to rehash all of that. But the mayor and I also had the Metro Mayor's Coalition Conference up in Asheville. We attended that and we, obviously beyond Director Sprayberry and I do want to say thank you for this time as well, if you'll pass that along. We actually did reach out and make contact with some individuals about residency planning. It's very timely in that one of the discussion topics that we had there was about a residency plan that Asheville implemented. Very informative to me, and I did not know this, that National Weather Service and NOAA, pretty much all of the climate data that they collect and everything that throughout the entire world comes to Asheville as the storage hub. And UNC Asheville in collaboration with this Collider Group, they have formed a public-private partnership to where they are looking at residency studies across the state. We talked with them. They were very interested in us here in New Bern. They have sent some information to us as well. They did Asheville's residency plan. They've done Piedmont Triad. Currently, they're working on that. So they have sent me some information I just received yesterday. I've passed that along to the mayor to review along with myself since we're the ones that discussed with them. But ultimately, if that is something that we may be interested in pursuing, we may do so. In addition to that, there would be a fee associated with that, which we have been in discussions with an individual that's local here that is very skilled in grant writing. And I have executed that contract for her to perform grant writing services on a myriad of grant writing opportunities for us to be able to go out and get grants that might help us with these plans as far as the cost, as well as other implementation strategies that we may have regarding flood and mitigation for our community. So we will be working over the next year throughout all of these deadlines for application of grant processes and ultimately, I'm very positive that there will be some come to fruition for us. I know that Golden Leaf has established about $25 million, I think is the number, towards Hurricane Florence recovery and mitigation funds. I know that she already has identified ones on grants.gov. I know there's some out there for those, as well as some other private corporation-type grants that may be out there. So we're pursuing those and we'll pursue those aggressively. I know that she's going to work closely with Amanda, the Community and Economic Development Manager here for the city, on these grants. Obviously, we should be hearing soon, I hope, on the CDBGDR funding that may be coming from the federal government. So hopefully, whenever we hear that. I know that they just had elections. I think that was a little bit of the holdup as far as seeing where a lot of that stuff goes, but ultimately, we should hear some funds being released for that. So that kind of covers the synopsis. I don't know if there's anything else, Mayor, that you would add.
While you're on that, you know, we had the emergency of the hurricane and then we've had the 30 to 90-day process is where we are. But I think to comfort New Bern and Craven County, that it would be a good idea to, we actually, one of the two gentlemen that we met with after the meeting, he had a show on the PBS channel or something. He was, I forget the name of his show, but I really do think that so many well-intended residents and all are giving us a lot of great ideas, but, and I think to get one or both of those guys come to New Bern and make a presentation to the New Bern Board of Alman and to the public, that will answer and give us a roadmap probably of the many things from carbon bubbles to everything else that give you a great idea of where to go in the future of our city. So I would encourage the board to see if we could give the managers some direction to try to get a one or two representatives from the Collider Group to come to New Bern. The only really partnership I know of in North Carolina right now is the Triad Group have, and we talked with them about that. And I see because of the time element, I mean, if we had plenty of time, I would like to see us partner with a group of cities around eastern North Carolina. But I just think, I think we've got to get ahead of the ball and get these guys down here and get us, to give us some strategic ideas about where we want to go. Mark, I had talked with you a little bit about that. Do you have anything to add to that?
I think if that's what the board chooses, I'm happy to get that set up. And to be honest with you, they're willing to, through their email that I read, they're willing to discuss those matters with us. Obviously, you know, they would do this for a fee, but ultimately, I think as far as the initial information sessions, whether they can make it in person, I don't know, but I'm sure that they would be willing to consider at least having some kind of discussion with us initially.
So with the board meeting?
Lazy Environmentalist is the show that the general, or the.
The Lazy Environmentalist, but he's not, he's not lazy, trust me. See what he's got going on. Does the board want to look into this? This is a North Carolina-based, national, well, worldwide group that are looking at long-term visionary ideas about, you know, I think that coastal communities are going to take different ideas. I know Miami presently is, is actually elevating streets and you step down to what was the existing sidewalk. So, you know, I don't know what we're going to do, but this group is going to help us find out.
I think it's important and we need to find out what they do and how they do it and how much it costs. it and how much it costs so that we can write the grant and find the monies. Golden Leaf's out there with monies and other things potentially could fund this, but we, we do have to have a long-term strategic plan, it's.
And this is what.
Necessary, yeah, it is necessary and we'd be foolish not to take advantage of the opportunities that are out there now to start that process.
One reason I want to get them down is in order to write a grant, we can't just kind of like ask for half a million dollars from somebody, we gotta, we gotta have some scope of where we want to go, so would the board want to direct the manager to try to arrange a presentation by this group?
Sure.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Stevens, do you need any further direction or do you, can you, uh, plan on making that happen next meeting?
I'll, I'll certainly try, I don't know what their schedule is, but I'll, I'll, I'll make the request.
Time is of the essence, so.
Yeah, I agree. Or we could have a special meeting.
Yeah.
A, a.
Yeah, I, you know, be better maybe at four in the afternoon or something.
Yeah.
Certainly see what their availability is and I'll work with the board on trying to schedule everybody's.
Okay, that's great. Did you have anything else under your manager's report?
Uh, not this time, sir, that'd be.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go to the new business, starting with Alderman Odom.
Uh, the only thing I have, mayor, I just want to reiterate that I, I think I would like to see staff, if, if they need our help, I'd like to see us come up with a list of all of the steps that we've taken, because we need to be able to reflect back on, because I know that there were some conversations that we've had in the past with some folks who had offered some support, we need to follow up with them. I think we're all doing so much that we forget about, oh, yeah, I was supposed to call that guy back, we just need to get all that information enumerated out. Um, I, I'd like to see that as soon as possible so we can share that with the public as well so they know, you know, some of the connect contacts that we've made and some of the resources that have been made available to us as well. Um, you know, our, our state legislation, you know, we were at a meeting, three of us, the, the night after hurricane with, with John Bell, um, so there's been a lot of folks that have reached out to us, want to make sure that, you know, we follow up and close those loops and that's, that's really the only request I have, mayor.
Just, if, if you don't mind, uh, I will need y'all's assistance with that because I didn't even know you had done that, honestly, uh, or I didn't remember that, if you may have told me, so if there's things like that you can think of, please send them to me, I can handle the staff side from the department heads and everything else, but I, I need it from y'all as well.
On the phone at three o'clock in the morning in the store with the representative and other people trying to get help down here, so, yeah, there's a lot that was going on.
Alderman Best.
Uh, yes, I'd like for the gentleman with, in the back to come up again, please, I have a question I want to ask him, maybe he can give me some insight on from our.
Jerry's for FEMA or State? Jerry.
Jerry, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was in another conversation.
I'm sorry to break that conversation up.
What was the question again?
Well, I just want to know if this would be, uh, a great resource for the city to, uh, get involved or get with the, I, and I don't know if you've had with any past experiences of any other cities or anything that you've dealt with for as hurricanes and flooding is concerned, to include the, what purpose would it be a good choice to include the Army Corps of Engineers to come in to take a look at your city? I mean, how does that work? Is that something that you've dealt with?
The Army Corps, I mean, I'm not going to dismiss their, Army Corps of Engineers because they can do some great work.
Okay.
The, the, the issues that I see is the vision that, that you were talking about ten, fifteen, twenty years, we may not be alive when the Army Corps completes the mission.
Yeah, okay.
So if you can get a scope of work and get a definitive time on it, that's one thing, but use every resource that you have. If you keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result, it's not going to happen. And, you know, you want, you want, as, as we've mentioned several times, and it's, it's now the FEMA mission is to come back more resilient, make communities more resilient, make communities more self-reliant. So how can we help you do that? And that's what we're trying to do with the HMGP funding, with the 407 funding, with, uh, helping you through the process of substantial damage, um, improving the insurance premiums for your communities, it's, you know, whatever we can do to put the community back and get you guys back to normal faster during the next one, because we all know, living in North Carolina, there will be a neck. As somebody said earlier, we've had two five-hundred-year events within the last four years, or last two years, so, uh, and there was an article on the news the other day that said it's happening, happening more and more frequently and becoming more and more severe. So having a long-range plan, getting everybody to the table is, is of utmost importance, not just FEMA, not just the state, HUD, you, you, uh, US Department of Agriculture, Army Corps of Engineers, whoever can help is who we need to bring to the table.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Alderman Kinsey.
Um, let's continue, work hard and work together and communicate.
Alderman Asch.
Nothing more than Amanda and Jeff, thanks so much for helping us get this word out and, and doing everything that you're doing to get the, the word out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you ask, somebody asked about the hotline number, do we have that number established?
Yeah, what's that number again?
Okay, six-three-nine-seven-five-eight-one.
Anybody have questions about New Bern flooding, et cetera? Uh, anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Alderman Harris.
No.
Yeah, of course, I always have a few things. Um, you know, we're having a trash issue downtown, I want to remind people, um, and I'm working with Matt on this, I'm going to continue to work with Waste Industries, I know Alderman Odom's had i- issues, but with the schedule this week, it didn't get picked up properly and the, all the trash dumpsters downtown were kind of overflowing and then when they picked them up, bags of trash all over, they weren't picked up, they were just left there in the parking lots and the different areas and it, I've got a lot of complaints about trash around downtown. And also too, if you're a business and the cardboard container is full, don't throw the cardboard on the ground because then it started blowing around everywhere, so we, we've had a few issues that we really need to stay on top of and I know I'm working with Matt, but I think it may be time for us to have a sit-down, Mr. Stevens with Waste Industries, again, um, getting some complaints, I know it's.
Didn't we rectify that situation?
Well, I don't know, it's really, it's difficult, I know you've had your issues on your end, but I'm having them on mine.
Our last meeting we had, we, our, I think.
I'm having some as well.
Our next direction was we were going to take legal action.
Yeah, I mean, it's just not a good situation, it really isn't, so we need to, to do something about that. Also too, um, I want to thank everybody for their support this past weekend with the community Christmas tree, oh, now you want to say something, so.
I forgot about.
You know, it, it rained, you know, we knew it was going to rain Saturday night, so we moved everything to Friday night and I can't thank everybody enough for the support, it was a great success. I, I want to thank, uh, the city manager because we had to, uh, pin him down in the corner to agree to move the tree over to, um, Union Park, but it is, uh, beautiful and it really turned out, thank you for your support on that market, looked beautiful and having that many people and then on Sunday, seeing that many more people out in the park enjoying it where they didn't have to get in the middle of the circle was a great thing, light up the season was good and a special thanks to YUP, who are the Young Urban Professionals, for sponsoring, uh, the sledding that occurred on Middle Street and Foster, you and your, your team was just incredible, the whole weekend was just, you know, Friday night just went perfect and we had so many compliments and visitors just really enjoying our community and saying how thankful they were to be able to visit. And I want to remind everybody that this Saturday night is the Christmas parade at three PM, uh, through, throughout downtown and as well as the flotilla, thank you, I'm glad to see the flotilla's going off on Friday night, come and support that because again, our marina's being destroyed and other things, we need to, we do need to support that great activity, so I do want to thank him and, uh, you know, thank you for the staff, it's been a lot on us. Um, I do have a question for you, um, I'm, sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Mr. City Attorney, can you just clarify one thing, I had another question online about HPC and ordinance and their guidelines. The guidelines are set by the HPC, not by the Board of Alderman, or do we approve them and do we have purview to change an ordinance once it's, or a guideline?
Yes, ma'am, the HPC develops the guidelines, um, I typically recommend they do come to you for ultimate approval, but the HPC adopts them, researches them, creates them, adopts them, ultimately they come to you for final approval.
Okay, and they make those in accordance with the State of Star Preservation Office and the Secretary of Interior?
State and federal standards, yes, ma'am, and failure to meet those standards can create downstream consequences.
So it's really important that we get that message out there, that HPC is going to be handling those issues and they should work, citizens should work within the HPC. If HPC wants to change those guidelines, it happens there, then ultimate approval would come to us, but they are the ones that would drive that change.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
But also in doing that, if they kind of get outside of the overview of, of, um, state national standards, then HPC would not, would cease to exist if they violated those standards.
Well, that, that's where you can create the downstream consequences, you can do it, but the, the consequences may be severe.
Okay, does anybody else have any, any additional, now Alderman Harris, did you mention you're going to be in Raleigh at the, at a meeting Thursday?
I mentioned that we were both going to be in that meeting.
Okay.
Um, but it's with the governor for the, um, recovery efforts and stuff, so we'll be there and we'll, we'll port back and then what I had to say is to Matt, I'll just text him.
Okay, great, anything else, uh, at this time? Uh, do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir, we will do, uh, so to one forty-three, three ten eleven, A three, to maintain our attorney-client privilege to discuss, halt the city of New Bern.
Okay. Motion, do we have a second? Second, all in favor of motion, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay. Motion carries.